I will call this meeting to order. And, uh...
I will call the roll. Gonzalez?
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here. Okay, Swift?
Present.
Green?
Here.
Fragoso?
Here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Chair Newton?
Here. Okay. I trust everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, Fragosa, and a second, Green. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And I'm going to open up the public hearing for any comments on non-agenda items. So if anybody wants to talk about a non-agenda item, please come up, state your name and where you live, if you'd like.
Good evening. Diana Perdue, 199 Scenic Road. And I'm here to share some thoughts about the zoning CH to CC. Rezoning CH to CC does not mandate or ensure affordable housing. The second units are supposed to be affordable by design, meaning that they are small. Supporters say that this will make them affordable. By design only goes as far as the desirability of the units, regardless of size. That's what drives the rent prices. Rezoning CH to CC is wrong on its face because it eliminates the conditional use permit. This removes the most important democratic process the townspeople have in which to voice their concerns about the issues they find most pressing, such as density, height, setbacks, and parking. The conditional use permit also mandates story polls so that people can actually see the dimensions of a project. All of this would be gone. Local laws and ordinances have been put in place for a reason, to create a balance of power, something all good governments need. The people and the developers should be on an equal footing when vetting any project, a balance between the public and the private, if you will. Neither should be allowed to run amok. The conditional use permit does indeed make it harder for developers to gain approval, but we only want developers who are willing to earn town approval by showing the respect and receptivity that the conditional use permit demands. The process should be hard. If downtown areas become zoned for condos and apartments in this or some other rezoning measure, the state density bonus law gives the builder the right to eliminate three of Fairfax's zoning requirements. Increased density by right takes away the town's ability to evaluate and manage impacts on traffic, schools, and water supplies. A town should have the right to say no to projects that threatens its infrastructure and resources. Any manipulation of our zoning regulations signals an ugly future for our town. You represent the residents and not the developers, so please say no to changing CH to CC. And I would also request that you remove any such notion of doing so from the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Come on up.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. Roberta Anthies, Two Snowden, Fairfax. And I agree with Diana's points about CH to CC. And I have some questions and concerns about the basis for rezoning CH to CC myself. I was told about two years ago at a combined meeting that the state would not accept our housing element unless we did this rezoning specifically to remove the conditional use permit. So I called Sacramento to learn more about this, and Melinda Coy, our representative, told me that we were considered in shortfall because we hadn't supplied the RENA numbers from a previous cycle and so therefore had to reduce constraints, sort of as a penalty for that. But I've come to question the whole notion of shortfall as it applies to ... whoops. As it applies to Fairfax. Fairfax halted the rezoning in that previous cycle because the people elected to exercise their democratic and legal rights to a referendum. And it's hard for me to understand how the state can penalize a town for obeying what is really a legal mandate. Secondly, along comes Senate Bill 828, which requires that the town rolls over unmet RENA numbers into the next cycle or risk a penalty. But this law hasn't been passed yet, which tells us that it is not currently a law, that these numbers be rolled over and become cumulative. So again, it's hard for me to see how Fairfax is in shortfall. We're currently slated for 61 units between 2014 and 2022, as far as I know. And we've acted in good faith. We've supplied 53 of low and very low-income units with Victory Village, and we have four years to do the rest in the other income categories. So the question ... I question the whole concept of shortfall as it applies to us and also the state's authority to demand that we reduce constraints as a result of this. It's a technical issue, and I may be misinformed and I may be misunderstanding, so I hope that you can clarify some of these things for me. But either way, whether I'm right or wrong, I feel it's another example of state overreach, which we're seeing so much of right now. The people who live in the current CH zones have the right and the freedom to build second units. Right now, as we're currently zoned, they just have to apply for the conditional use permit, which I think is advisable in any case. But the people who will lose their rights will be the townspeople, who will not be able to weigh in on the elements that Diana mentioned, height, setbacks, parking, and density. And those are the things that are important to us, which are not necessarily covered in the same way in the design review. So, you know, I honestly think that we can supply good, affordable housing in Fairfax. I think we've done it. I think we'll continue to do it. I'd like to see us do it without reducing the people's rights or undermining the democratic process. So I don't know where you are in your recommendations to the town council, but I hope you'll really look into the issues before you comply and give up this conditional use permit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight that would like to speak on any item that's not currently on our agenda? Okay. Oh, go ahead. You can come up to the mic and say your name and where you're from, if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Lauren Tampkin. I'm from here. I'm not really sure exactly what's on the agenda. I believe we're going to speak about the bills concerning the development here in this town. Is that not on the agenda for tonight? Okay. Yeah, I'm deeply, deeply concerned about any kind of rezoning, any kind of new developing. People keep talking about housing, needing more housing. You know, I understand that there's a supposed housing shortage, but I am not in favor of new housing being developed whatsoever. That's just going to create more traffic, more density in our town that we love so dearly that Frank Egger has worked so hard and adamantly for 40-plus years to make sure Fairfax remains what it is today. And I'm here because I'm very deeply concerned about all this new developing conversation. I'm not really sure why nobody, nobody, ever talks about rent control around here. We keep talking about affordable housing needed, and rent control is never on the table, ever. So this is another concern of mine. I grew up here. I rent here. Rents are out of control because they quote-unquote "can," and it's just not okay. I don't understand how this is okay in this town now, in this day and age. You know, Google, Apple walked into this town with their big money and can afford it, and people like me, who grew up here, went to school here, have family here, cannot afford it. And it's all because of rent control. It's not on the table. And now we have an answer to build more and make things more dense here, which is going to completely change the fabric of this community. So I don't know where I have to go, or who I have to vote with, or what petition I have to start, but I am not in favor of any new development at all, not anywhere along the bus line, because let's be real, no one's using the bus that isn't already using the bus. And any of these big-money people that are buying up all the houses around here, they're not going to use the bus. Nobody's going to use the bus. Everybody is going to their jobs, out of town, and they're going to use their cars. And it's going to be a traffic jam from hell. So I drive around here. I work in the community. I am a pet care provider, and I have to use the road. And I am ... I grew up here. This is my town. I am so upset what's going on. And I don't know who this Weiner guy is, making all these new developing projects that everybody's talking about, but this has to stop. And that's what I'm here to say today, is this really has to stop, and rent control needs to be on the table. We need to figure out how we're going to move forward with all of this. We can't afford this anymore. How high are these prices going to go for houses for rent or for sale? I can't buy a house here. I grew up here my whole life. There's no way. And it's just getting worse and worse. And now we want to build more. And it's ... I'm flabbergasted. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else would like to talk about an item that's not on our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Excuse me through the chair. Could someone turn off the red button on that microphone, please?
Okay. We have no items on our consent calendar, so it takes us up to item number one on our agenda, 290 Tamalpais Road, application 1801. So, Linda?
Okay. So this applicant is requesting a retaining wall height variance to construct an eight-foot-tall steel I-beam and poured concrete retaining wall that would be 64 feet in length adjacent to the eastern property line. The wall would maintain a setback from the paved edge of Tamalpais Road of 3 feet 2 inches and would be located entirely on the private property. The purpose of the wall is to stabilize an unstable landslide scarp that has the potential to continue to move and undermine the poolhouse on the site as well as damage Tamalpais Road. Town Code Section 17.044080B2 limits retaining walls beyond the front setback line to 6 feet in height. Therefore, the project requires the approval of retaining wall height variance. The steep slope of the hillside and scarp make it difficult and more expensive to design a stepped repair wall that would keep the retaining walls at or below the permitted 6 feet in height. Additionally, the creation of two walls would be more disruptive to through traffic on Tamalpais Road during the construction phase and would likely require more excavation and fill. Therefore, we're recommending that you approve application 1801 by adopting Resolution Number 18001, setting forth the findings and conditions for the project approval. That would conclude our report. Oh, there were a number of corrections and suggested changes to the resolution, so I did a red ... a blacklined version for you that I put in front of you.
Thank you.
The suggestions were made by planning commissioners. Okay.
Any questions for staff?
Well, how does the town engineer ... Tab's the town engineer weighed in on this at all?
Not yet.
Are they expected to?
Yeah. Yeah, they review it before we issue the building permit.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Is that listed? I didn't notice it in the conditions or not. Did we have that?
If you feel better putting it in, you can, but it goes to the town engineer before we issue the building permit. Anytime there's engineered plans or anytime there's any kind of engineering report, it gets reviewed for engineering by the town engineer.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know there was a couple recent projects that were on the right-of-way, and there's, you know, concerns that to make sure that he had reviewed it. Because it's on the right-of-way, I thought that it was important that he looks at it, too.
Yeah, you can definitely include that condition if you ...
Thought ... I'm sorry, through the chair. I thought this was not on the right-of-way, that it was on private property.
It's along the edge of the right-of-way, but it's on private property.
It's a couple feet in from the right-of-way, but on private property.
And whether it's in the right-of-way or on private property, if there's engineered plans involved, the town engineer reviews it.
Yes. And actually, condition number two states town engineer show review and the public works manager.
Cindy?
On the staff report, just for clarification, that second paragraph from the bottom on page two probably striked the sentence that says, "Therefore, the project requires the approval ..."
Thank you, yes.
... related to the excavation permit, because we don't have ...
Yes, the plan ... I'll just extrapolate on that. So if you're excavating over 100 cubic yards, excavation requires planning commission review. This one is under 100, so it does not require an excavation permit from you. So I will delete that.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone here like to speak on this application? The address is 290 Tamalpais Road.
It's 64 feet long, but there's two 8-foot-long wing walls, so the facade that actually is adjacent to the road is not 64 feet. It's to ... right, it's repairing an unstable section of the road. Yeah.
Through the chair, is the public comment period still open?
Yes.
Okay, then you might ... if you have public comments, please come back to the mic to make those, and then we can get it on record, and it could be a formal question, please.
All right. Well, the ... our resident was asking about the length and whether it was for the safety of the area, and our staff was answering that yes, that was the case. And it's a 64-foot-long retaining wall with some wing walls at the end so that the facade along ... well, actually, you were heard. You were on mic. Okay, so I'm going to ...
So also, excuse me through the chair, there is a staff report on that old bank right outside the door here, if you wanted to take a closer look at that. Anybody?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, not seeing anybody. Anyone want to weigh in on their thoughts on this application?
Is the owner here? Do we want to hear from the owner?
Is the applicant here? Hi.
My name's Leo. I'm the architect. I'm involved. I engaged the engineer to this project. I didn't expect this to be going in front of the planning commission, but he designed it such that it was necessary, because it already sloughed through last winter. And it's made it through this time, but I don't know if it'll last through another winter. And it may be 64 feet, but as those wing walls go back, that's about 16 feet you'd subtract that's actually on the front edge of the road. I've talked to the neighbor just across the street from that, and she says, "Well, that's hillside living." And that it is difficult to do a step back. Typically, I would do a shorter wall and then step it back, but its steepness, something on the order of what has happened on White Hill there, somewhere in that order. So I don't see many other alternatives. The only other thing that I did is similarly on the 6-foot and shorter wall just down the street is add color concrete and add a texture to the infill between the verticals to integrate it more with the earth, in terms of color and texture.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These voids that I see at four-or-so-foot intervals, is that ... will those be filled or are those open?
No, it'll be filled. It's ... the engineer calls it a soldier pile wall, in a similar fashion they did on White Hill, where you just drill deep, so we don't ... it reduces the amount of time that you're in the way of the road. It's pretty narrow there.
Right, right.
But ...
Right.
So those are putting ...
This is where the I-beams go.
Correct.
And can you tell me, what is all this lumber and fencing just behind this wall that we see in the photograph?
That's lattice work, I believe. That's at 234. That's the picture of the wall at 234, just north or south of it.
Oh, this isn't your wall?
No, it is not. Well, it's the same client who owns 234, but he ... we did that wall because of a similar deal where ... but it's not as steep. And I wanted to mimic the same because they ... in same texture and same color, because they're very ...
I don't have a problem with the wall. I think it looks good. It's a ... it seems to me a sound construction. I was wondering what all this fencing and lumber was behind it, but you're telling me that this photograph is not of your property with the wall scanned in?
Just look at the wall below. Just the wall below.
Okay.
Behind there is what is existing on 234.
Does anyone else have a question for the applicant?
Hi, Michelle Rodriguez. I just have a few questions. I think the first had to do with the ... kind of the noise in drilling the soldier pile. I understand that for construction, particularly equipment, that it's exempt from the noise ordinance. And so do you have a sense of what that will be for the neighbors? Because the distance between that location where you're drilling and the adjacent property is fairly close. So do you have some sense of decibel level?
No, I don't.
And the length of time it's going to take to drill those 10 holes that are 20 feet, 21 feet deep? I guess we're going to bedrock?
Yes. Typically, you have a portable generator kind of thing that runs a hydraulic machine that causes the drill rig to penetrate the earth there. But it's like a diesel engine. It's like a truck, but it's ... I don't know what the decibel level is.
Right. So it's going to be 10 ... 10 holes, 21 feet deep, in whatever time it's going to take to have that machine operating during that time?
Yeah, I suspect that something like that would take about three days.
And just looking at the quantity of soil that's going to be removed, can you just talk a little bit? I was kind of estimating about 40 trips of a dump truck, a small dump truck, getting up and down there. And so you've kind of looked at that and figured out that that's plausible yourself?
Mm-hmm. According to the engineer, he really did all that work.
I didn't see a landscaping plan. Were you at all thinking about putting something behind that, some ... something to climb over or be in front of, or just soften it a bit?
Well, it's been done before down the road further. There will be rock put on the embankment, and that's part of why the wall is such that we have a steep embankment, like this. And then here we're doing a retaining wall, and there's a rock fill to help reduce the steepness of it and retain the upper area as well. So ...
And that was one of the reasons why I thought we weren't going to do landscaping, because the rock itself would kind of prohibit that.
Yeah. Well, it still allows plant growth to come between the rocks.
Oh, I see.
But there is no intention at this point to plant anything particular in there.
And so if you needed to tie in another retaining wall in future because of future issues, because it is quite steep there, and I have seen over time that it is sloughing off, you can tie into this wall easily or do whatever you need to do. There's not ... the wing walls itself aren't going to get in the way of that in future.
Right.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, we already closed our public comment. All right, I will reopen it. Come on up and ask your question.
My concern is I'm not really understanding why the holes need to be 21 feet deep. That seems like very, very deep. And I'm also wondering if the wall itself needs to be that high. I know that you're trying to make it so the hill doesn't go down onto the street, but does the wall itself need to be very high? Maybe at like half the size, just to kind of keep the dirt from ... maybe also putting some trees along there, some natural bush growth instead of this big wall?
Excuse me. Can you ask us the questions? And then we'll ask the applicant to respond. Thank you.
So that's pretty much my question, is the height of the wall and why it has to go down 21 feet.
Okay, thanks. Do you mind ... do you have an answer, or you have a question?
I'm just a neighbor. I just ... hello, my name is Paulus Adov, and I live on Tamalpais Road. And I'm familiar with this section of the road, and I think it's a great idea to install such a retaining wall there. And I understand why the variance is necessary. And I'm a general contractor, so I'm familiar with the type of soil that we have here. And because it's clay, I know that it needs to go deep into the bedrock. So I think it's a very reasonable solution, and I'm thankful that they're doing that. I think it's going to make the neighborhood safer.
Thank you. All right, do we have our answer?
I'm kind of confused because I've ... no, I didn't see there was a soils report with, but I know that ... I know the engineer who did that, but he's also a soils engineer and civil engineer. So his drawings show that it's 12 feet, so I'm not sure where the 21 feet is coming from. And I ... from ... the drawings seem quite reasonable and standard practices, so I think the architect gave a good estimate as to like how many days it's going to take to do to drill the holes. I'm also an architect. I think about ... I think you write probably good guesses like three days.
Maybe to answer that question on Section A-A is a standard detail. On your far left, you can see that the wall is at 8 foot above grade. Below grade is your 12 feet. So in his attached description, he was talking about between, I think, a 21-foot depth required to hit bedrock.
Okay. And I ... as far as the landscaping, I think right now that kind of side of the hill is all kind of natural, and I don't think there's a lot of landscaping, so I think as it's proposed, seems reasonable. Looks like he's ... they're already proposing kind of an upgrade from your standard retaining wall. Usually, these kinds just have like wood planks on here, so I think that they've chosen an attractive solution.
All right, I think I've got my meeting run away with me here. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And if anyone would like to ...
Through the chair, I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Carolyn's comments. I think it's a minimalist solution that should work very well. And the depth is necessary, one, to be able to hit and tie into the bedrock so that it's not just a piece of concrete, a stone flapping in the wind with the dirt coming down on it. And the engineer ... I'm not an engineer, but I know that they have correctly assessed the amount of height you need to stop a mountain that's 10 times that high coming down onto it. And so those are the calculations that were done by your engineer, and I think it's a very good design.
I like the design. I think we ... it's obviously smart going down to bedrock. You have to do that. Millennial Tower and all that stuff. So I am ready to propose a motion to pass, approve this resolution.
I would second that motion if you're making it serious. If there's ... I would second that motion if you're making it serious. If there's no other comments?
Maybe clarifying that you're recommending that we're adopting the revised resolution that staff handed out or the original one in our packet?
Exactly. With the revised black line resolution that was handed out. Exactly. Okay, I will make that the motion then. We'll move to approve resolution number 18001 with the corrections as stated.
Is there a second?
I will still second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Your application has been approved. There is a, what is it, 15 day, 10 day period within which someone can appeal and pay a $400 appeal fee. So, thank you very much. Our next item is the general plan work program, possible zoning amendments item.
Excuse me, folks. It's hard to hear with your discussion going on. Thank you.
So Ben, I think you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. What you have before you is a culmination of several months and meetings and an all-day workshop, which staff is very appreciative for the commitment that commissioners made to this effort. As noted in last month's meeting, there's really, I guess you could call it two 600-pound gorillas facing the commission and staff for the appreciable future. In, as far as work program priorities, the first is the Miranda Heights subdivision of the wall property. This is close to having a project status letter issued. It will be issued by this time next week. There's been a lot of investigation of many aspects of the project and that the letter will be very detailed as to the project. In terms of where this project stands in the process, you really have to get to a complete project before you can initiate the rest of the formal review, which in this case would go directly into an environmental component. The applicant has already accepted that there will be an EIR conducted for this process, project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And that's just looking at the writing on the wall. I mean, some people would say, yeah, let's do an initial study and do that evaluation and see if there's any potential for what they call significant impacts. But it's pretty obvious that when you're dealing with a 10-lot subdivision of a 100-acre parcel that you're going to find some potentially significant impact. So, we would be undertaking that. Other aspects, current aspects of this include that the Fairfax Open Space Committee is scheduled to hear their portion of review of this project at a special hearing in these chambers at the Women's Club next Thursday, the 22nd. So, if people are interested in kind of getting a first review of that, obviously the-
Excuse me, Ben. What is, what's happening on Thursday?
The Fairfax Open Space Committee? Yeah. Yes. Correct. Now, this will be a limited review. As we know, the Open Space Committee, for example, isn't looking at the subdivision per se. They would be evaluating the open space aspects, things like trails, natural resources, things that are within their charter. So, they will be initiating that process. And I'd like to emphasize that the project is not complete and that this will be a many-month process with many hearings, workshops, et cetera, as part of the public review. So, as your commission is undoubtedly aware, we've also developed a unique website for this project, FairfaxBuildingPlanning.org. And if anybody desires to get information, very current information on this project, we are posting all public documents on that site. So, if you go to that site and sign up, you'll get a, an email notification when new information, for example, once the project status letter, which is going to go out next week, is written, it will be posted or a link to that will be on the website. And people who've signed up for notifications will get those. So, that's the, the latest on Miranda Heights. And that will obviously be a very in-depth undertaking for the town in the coming months and most particularly your commission. We're still working on some of the procedural details of how the environmental review and non-environmental review components will occur and the timing on that. And I'll have something much more in-depth report to the commission at the April meeting.
Through the chair. Ben, do you have any tentative dates right now of when we might first see a preliminary run of this? Or will we be doing more of a study session before we get a formal item? Or, once the letter goes out, how much time do we have before we must officially review it at the commission?
Well, with an EIR, generally speaking, they say you've got a year to review it, but there are no penalties attendant with not meeting that one-year time period. You know, the fact is, is that there are many elements that could extend that timeline out. In terms of timing for the commission, probably a couple of months would likely before you have a formal item, like I said, I intend to bring this back, before your commission to give you a more in-depth discussion based in part on, on the project status letter. But we're, what, the first public workshop would likely be a scoping session. And I would anticipate, and that's basically to get the public's input, anybody who shows up their opinion on potential environmental impacts associated with the project. As it turns out, what happens is the public shows up, it tells you what they think about the project. And then the environmental consultant sorts that out into, okay, this is an environmental. And then the rest is something that staff takes, you know, under consideration. And so, in order to have that scoping session, obviously, we would have to select the environmental consultant. The process of selecting the environmental consultant will probably involve the town council. And again, I'll get more into the details on that at the next planning commission meeting.
Does anyone else have questions for Ben?
I sort of have an agenda question. And maybe it was, because I didn't look at the agenda well enough when we approved it. But we've got agenda item two, which is staff direction on zoning ordinance. Then we've got agenda item three, which is the work program priorities.
Right.
So, are we going with two first or?
Yeah. That's, that's, that's an excellent observation is that really those, they're combined because it's all part of the work program. And the reality is, is that, as was observed by several commissioners at the last workshop, the, the real thrust of what the commission and staff are going to be facing this year unavoidably are going to be the Miranda Heights subdivision of the wall property and cannabis regulations. So, forgive me for taking that out of turn with the, with the blessing of the chair and the rest of the commission. So if you're ready, I can move on to other items. Cannabis discussions.
Well, so you're going to finish the report and maybe then we come back to the-
Yes.
Agenda item two?
Yeah. I'll include that. Cannabis discussion, those of you who were present at the town council meeting on March 7th, and I know the chair was there, know that this is a really extensive, intensive, complex discussion that is likely going to be occupying the town and the planning commission, at least through the summer. Our preliminary deadline to get some kind of regulations and policies in place on a more permanent basis would be the current expiration of the moratorium. The town council in November acted to place a moratorium on all commercial cannabis uses with a few limited exceptions, for example, medical dispensaries. But at their March 7th meeting, there was again another PowerPoint presentation which I gave. And the town attorney was there. And a really good kind of parameter setting discussion by the town council. At that time, they preliminarily indicated that the town is probably not likely to be in favor of allowing testing laboratories, manufacturing, or distribution, which is very helpful to staff because Linda's been doing some research. And anybody who dives into the regulatory context of this at the state level, it's hundreds of pages. And, you know, we're, we're having conversations almost daily about, well, what does this mean? And, you know, you call up the state and their phone number, which supposedly is the Bureau of Cannabis Control, is the Department of Consumer Affairs. So, they're still sorting out their phone numbers. It's, it's kind of interesting, but- Yeah, right. Perseverance, she finally got through. And we're actually starting to get some information from them. But really, the ball's in the towns court. With the breather that's been afforded by the moratorium, we anticipate that we'll be looking very carefully at the topics of retail sales, whether it's a medical marijuana dispensary or a bricks and mortar, adult-use retail store. We're also going to be looking at cultivation, not commercial cultivation likely. I mean, you could just look around the town and see, gosh, you know, is it really something that fits to the land uses in Fairfax, especially in comparison to the 68,000 growers that they estimate, members of the small, or the growers' association throughout the state. So, you know, if somebody's growing the more than $10 billion worth of crop, that's, you know, that was the last estimate, but it's really not in Fairfax. In any event, those are going to be items that we'll be going into, comparing our current codes in the case of cultivation and dispensaries, and just trying to sort out what Fairfax, what fits for Fairfax. At that public hearing, there was a lot of people representing kids. In fact, there were a lot of very articulate young members of our community who, who spoke to the council during the public testimony portion. So, clearly that's something that everybody is very conscious of and concerned about. And I think, from what I heard from the council, really, we need to focus on and make sure that, you know, the adult, legal adult use aspects are differentiated in any circumstance from what is and will continue to be very illegal, which is young, people younger than 21 using that. So, that's about it on that. But, yeah. So, once we get some program parameters from the council, we're likely to have a special workshop as the next discussion. Actually, it might go back to the council on the 4th. But two of the commissioners and I won't be there, so I'm not sure what they're going to be discussing. But regardless, we're also got authorization from the council to hire a firm that specializes in municipal aspects of cannabis governance. You know, there's a broad variety of things. And actually, if commissioners have questions or comments or points that they'd like to have, potentially have the consultant look at, feel free to email me. My hope is that it will be a joint workshop session with the council and the planning commissioner, as many commissioners as can attend. Because what will happen is, once the parameters, the program parameters are set, the rest of the discussion goes back to your commission for consideration of all things cannabis and particularly commercial cannabis. But, you know, including cultivation and things like that.
When is that workshop?
It hasn't, we don't have a date yet. It's probably, we're looking at maybe late April or sometime in May.
Okay, one, one thing, can I make a comment? Is it okay if I make a comment about this? Two things that, that are of concern among real estate lawyers in Marin looking at these issues include manufacturing and testing, especially using volatile solvents. Fires, hazards are large in that area. So, just some parameters. Let me know when the workshop is. Yeah, thanks.
Other questions for staff about this, this part of the report? I have a question. As you see this moving forward between now and November, in terms of timing, if you're planning on hiring consultant, having workshops, I'm just wondering, given what it takes to pass an ordinance, whether there's going to be a lot of time for the planning commission to weigh in in order, I mean, is the goal to get something done by November?
Yes. And I believe if, once this, we get the direction from the council, it, it goes to the planning commission. So there'll be an opportunity, several meeting opportunity for the planning commission to review this. And likely that will be what will take place.
Ben, that November timeframe could, if needed, be extended, correct?
Yes, that's correct. A moratorium can be extended for an additional year.
Okay.
Okay. And so those are the, the big ticket items that, like I said, it's going to be multiple hearings over multiple months. And lots of, lots of issues and public involvement and, you know, this is how our process works. And it's, it's, I'm very confident that whatever comes out of that will be something that reflects the interest of, the unique interest of this community. Actually, I think I'm going to throw a little, I will back up into item two because I think it's a prefacing comment. And that is, the commission focused on the general plan implementation items, and rightfully so, the general plan being the constitution for development, for lack of a better word. But when you look at our programs, it's really much more than just development oriented. But what we also were discussing with your commission was the fact that quite a few, the staff is basically very busy working full-time, or in the case of Michelle halftime, on current planning projects. It has been observed by staff previously, and I think there was some concurrence by the planning commission, that several items which the commission, we're talking about project applications, which your commission under current town code is required to evaluate could be addressed administratively by staff. And I would like to clarify something, and that is the difference between ministerial and administrative review. When you think ministerial, think building permit, building department, where it's like you want to install a, a, a new faucet or something like that. Actually, you don't need a permit for that. But new plumbing, it's not a discretionary item. So ministerial, building permit. Administrative, on the other hand, is a discretionary review. It still involves public notice, discretionary application, evaluation by staff. What it doesn't have is a public hearing before your commission. And-
I'm going to interrupt you. So-
Yes.
We start out with the item three.
Yes.
Which was the report on the priorities, right? What's, what we have to look forward to, this work program priorities.
Correct.
And I feel like you're moving, you said you're going to move back into item two.
Well, yes.
Because I want to give the public a chance to talk. And I think if we jumble these things around, I don't know when to ask for public input on anything.
That's an excellent comment. So, insofar as what I'm recommending is that we look at item two because it prefaces additional discussion on the remainder of the general plan implementation items. Perhaps what we should do is open the public comment period on the two items that we've just discussed. And then when we get into the discussion about zoning changes, we can open the public, the item for public comment at the end of that and then go back to the remainder of the general plan items or whatever your preference is.
To the chair, I think we should just, because there are two separate things we're looking at. One is- One is the workload priorities that we want to focus on. And then the other one to facilitate that are perhaps making some of the changes that are addressed in agenda item two. So I think my druthers would be that we just go agenda item two, go through that, and then address agenda item three, because two may have an impact on three, and just do them one after the other.
Yeah, my only concern with that is then we have gone quite some time after discussion of the wall property and the cannabis regulation without hearing back from anybody. And, you know, I want to be transparent. I don't know that I want to have a lot of long discussion, but I do want to make sure that we're being transparent and people can, can comment on the report, so...
One additional comment is the, the wall property and the cannabis, it's really an update. I mean, yes, there may be additional public comment, but we're not here to review the merits. It's, it's not in the context of that. It's really simply to say, this is what's going on, and again...
And I'd actually rather you just finish item three, and then we'll stop and we'll pause, and if somebody, if anybody wants to comment on the overall work program priorities, which is what item three is, they can do that, and then we'll go back to talk about number two, if that's okay.
All right, and I apologize for interjecting that confusion. I realized that probably was confusing. So, in terms of general plan implementation items, what, what your commission did at the last meeting was, took their five highest priorities, and we in turn ordered those, organized those, and out of that, we said, well, it really, when you looked at items that had votes for them, it was really kind of worked into a top 10. And looking at the scope of the top 10 general plan implementation related priorities, they really cover a, an important breadth of current topical issues that emerged out of the 300-plus general plan implementing programs contained in the general plan. So we, we took the commission's, commissioners' individual top five, created a top 10. In terms of how those play out, we feel that they're all important in that having distilled down 319, I believe, implementing programs to 10, that we're really not saying, oh, this is the one that we really are hanging our hats on. I'm curious to see what the commission's comments are, but it also should be noted that with these type of things, it also relates to how much bandwidth we get on the zoning stuff. But what we're saying is, we'll be looking at some of these inevitably, some of these will, may be a result of challenges that the town faces as we go forward in the coming months. But these are ones which the planning commission basically elected to say, let's take this to the town council and see what they think in terms of priorities, and then assuming we get the bandwidth to work on these, start working on them, come up with work programs for the ones that the council agrees are priorities, or ones which we unavoidably have to deal with. Not unavoidably, but, you know, just emerge as ones that really are priorities. So going through the general plan implementation items...
Excuse me, through the chair. Ben, are these numbered in order of priority, or are they random?
No, they are, yeah. But what we did, yes. Yes, the one that was the highest vote getter is item number one, and then you'll notice that there were some ties, 8A and 8B, for example, and what happened there was, they had the same number of ordinal, the same ordinal value. But as I said in my remarks, I think that all of these are richly deserving. I mean, it's, it's a brutal process to say, hey, here's 320 great things that the general plan implementation people, your planning commission, the town council spent literally years in developing and saying, these are really important things for the town, and here's our top 10. So...
That was a good piece of work. But, you know, I think in looking at these, they're synthesized into things, issues that are important in a more timely manner for us, given projects that are coming up. So I do see some, some method to our madness here, I think is what I'm talking about.
Yes, and not to spend a ton of time on each of these individually, but to say that what we did was, and I have to acknowledge the two, two people here for their assistance. They wrote many of these sections, and then I just edited them. I couldn't have done it without them. But what this is, is sort of a way to say, let's summarize why these emerged as the highest priority. And so that was what we attempted to do in the discussion, is just a brief summary of why these particular general plan items are particularly relevant and important and deserve attention as priorities. So that's something that I would like to get commission suggestions on verbiage or rationales, discussions that maybe we didn't emphasize or that you would like to see emphasized more. So in terms of how it worked out, conservation, historic and cultural resources, I mean, one of the reasons that emerged was, of course, Cassidy DeBaker is ready, willing, and able to assist in doing that. It also plays into this context of preserving the downtown character. And as we know, there are moves afoot at the state level that could radically change that character. So both in terms of defining what is the character, the physical character of the downtown, and then working on some sort of policy and regulatory context to preserve that, it's a timely item in many regards. Land use program...
And to interrupt you one more time, I'm sorry. Can we simply move forward with that and ask Cassidy to come in and give us an outline of a work program that we can get her going, or, I understand that, am I out of line here? Okay. Why is everybody looking at me and laughing?
Well, I was, I was going to actually ask you to hold off on the, the comments till we get through the report.
That's fine.
I'm going to let the public weigh in, and then let's have a conversation about our thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, item two with land use, which is, comes from the land use element, and that's evaluate existing visually significant areas. And this is something which the commission is well aware, we're in the process, or the visually significant areas map, and update is appropriate. And we are doing that, and we feel we have to do that because that provides important input on the Miranda Heights subdivision. So we, what's happening is, this is a 1970s hand-drawn map. It's not strictly speaking to scale. It doesn't include a lot of helpful topographic locational features. So just the process of taking that and putting it into an accurate digital context will help us to really see, hey, this is where we're talking about, and, and some of the visual things. And then we can continue to say, well, if we're talking about the gateway to the town as you approach it from the west, coming off White sill, or from the east, coming from Santa Seminole, things like that. So this is something that we have to do, and will be very helpful to have it in a digital context. Item number three, open space, conditions surrounding development near ridge lines and encourage county and Marin to align the ridge line ordinance. I think it's a two-way street that when we're looking at ridge line development and language and how we do that, it would be both our Fairfax ordinance and what the county has. I mean, obviously, the county's ridge line policies only apply within the county, and there isn't much potential for additional development in, in their jurisdictional areas. But we're dealing with a subdivision that does have everything to do with development in ridge line areas. So that's something that we can and should be looking at, including to help us evaluate the wall subdivision. Housing program. This was an interesting one because it was in a synopsized format when the planning commission reviewed it, and I think the title said it all, and I referred to that in my staff report, preserve existing low-income units. It's funny because in the general plan, and they even noted this, it's actually in the housing element, they said, you know, it talks about preserving deed-restricted units and work with owners so they stayed affordable. And then they said, but we don't have any of these. And, and so you're kind of going, well, what's the importance of the context? Well, the importance is that it's critical to preserve existing low-income units, and we have those. And an example, and this is something that I think was one of the reasons why the commission said this is really important, was this potential for people to take some of the smaller units and say, we don't want those anymore. And we're not so much seeing this in Fairfax, but they are experiencing it in other jurisdictions in Marin, where people are buying a property that maybe has a couple of units, and they're combining into one big unit. So as I said in my report, the general plan is, to use the old bromide, a living and breathing document. And what it really means is that, yeah, okay, this was developed in 2012 when they were looking at certain things. Now in 2018, we're looking at other things, but again, the key thrust of that is preserve low-income units in efforts, richly divert, deserving efforts, to do things like avoid a net loss of housing units. So that would be the context that I would suggest, and that's written up accordingly. Further on housing, the density bonuses, zoning, and other incentives. And there was a discussion that former planning commission attorney Katie Rosinski made, where she was talking about certain potential benefits to the community regarding adopting our own low-density boning, bonus zoning incentives. And I will say this, we're still in the early stages of sorting out how that would actually play out. Certainly, the state, as we know, has that, that density bonus requirement, and this would be part of the discussion when we get into state housing laws. And I know that there's concern on the, our interest in the commission on that, and we're scheduling that likely for the next planning commission meeting where we will kind of go through the laundry list of state regulations and how they affect the town. But that would be something that we would look at and determine, does that help Fairfax, especially insofar as we know that there are mandates to provide these incentives? So is there a way to put a local flavor on that to say, these are the type of density bonus incentives we're comfortable with or more comfortable with versus kind of, you know, what the state is, might just be saying right at the top? Number six, land use, development and adopt, and ordinance to preserve neighborhood scale and character to rebuild structures when wide-scale destruction has occurred. Again, you know, the, the town was actually ahead of the curve on this. There was a lot of policies in the general plan that deal with natural disasters that predated the disastrous fires up north. That just kind of provided a sharp focus on the relevance and how we approach it. There's a recognition, and this is discussed in some of the latter priorities, that it's really not the planning commission's scope to look at things like evacuation plans and stuff like that. It's, it's, that's not a planning item. It was mislabeled as a planning staff and planning commission item when the general plan was adopted. But looking at how the community foresees itself in the aftermath of a similar disaster would be something that the planning commission can, and, you know, per the commission's vote, would look at as a priority, assuming that we get the ability to do so. And I was working on a post-disaster ordinance at the county level before I left the county, and I will have material for that if it turns out that, that turns, you know, is something that the town council deems is a priority. And certainly, it's, it's an important and far-ranging topic, given the, the acceptance we all have of living in a forest carries with it certain risks. And that's the primary fire risk, but we also know that we're an earthquake country, we're prone to flooding. So all those bring, bring to bear in this conversation and would be part of that post-disaster conversation and potentially development of an ordinance. Seismic safety program, very interesting. You start to look at what the town's done, and it's not clear whether the historic work that was done simply applied to unreinforced masonry buildings, in which case, yes, there's been efforts to identify those and get those retrofitted, and my understanding is that much of that work is done, but most of the buildings in the town aren't URM's, they're wood frame, wood construction. Furthermore, you know, there's questions about likely buildings that would be used in a post-disaster context if they were available, such as the pavilion and, and some of our schools and things like that. You know, just, that's where people are going to have to go if their houses are destroyed, and we're going to keep them in the community. So again, a very relevant topic to dive into and get the answers about how far we are with that program, and, you know, should we be budgeting some money to hire consultants to look at this and kind of say, this is what needs to be done, here's where the funding is, or, you know, this is what we'd like to do, and we'll have to figure out where to get the funding. Item number, actually, that was seven A, and this is seven B, is incorporate lighting restrictions for proposed new commercial development, replacing street lighting and residential landscaping. And this actually goes beyond that a little bit because, as you will find out when the dark sky discussion, which is scheduled, I believe, preliminary for the April meeting, you know, if you're shining lights at night, it's going to have an impact on, for example, birds that fly at night and things like that. In addition to being, you know, you look at the heat maps in the United States versus the rest of the world, and, you know, say, gee, how do we consume a third of the world's energy? Well, you know, we keep the lights on for much of the night in many places. So these are the type of conversations that Fairfax, being a very forward-thinking, environmentally-oriented community, will be discussing at a planning commission level. And if the town council deems this to be a priority, we would be carrying forward efforts to maybe come up with policies and, and a regulatory framework for, for that topic. Number eight, A, safety, establish a hazard abatement district. Again, this is really the, the fire and police, but it's important. So we would recommend that to the town council. It's, you know, this is something that the commission feels is important, it's not a planning commission item. This same number of votes would be open space. The, if development plans are presented to the planning commission, the commission should encourage clustered development. And, you know, particularly relevant because you're going to be dealing with an application in the next, in the coming months, the Wall Heights, Miranda Heights subdivision of the wall property, that is very much involved with, do we agree with what the developer is proposing to do vis-à-vis clustering? So that's an example of where this would be directly applicable, and the question would be, you know, there's certain trade-offs, and, you know, what do we really mean when we talk about that? So a very topical discussion, and one that even if we don't say, well, we're going to use, you know, follow up with a full-fledged program, we're going to be looking at this, it'll be imbued in the review of that development. Number nine was safety, develop a fire evacuation plan for the highest fire hazard areas. And, you know, it just reminds me of the conversation, and Commissioner Swift was at all the discussions where Todd Lando, the Marin Fire Safe head guy, said, if you want to know how to evacuate, just figure out how you drive to the grocery store. But there's more than that. The reality is, though, that it's, again, it's important, really important to some people. You know, we have stairways and things like that, and, you know, efforts to improve those. You can look at Mill Valley and what they're doing, and, you know, certain aspects of that could come into play. It's not really a planning commission item. It's, again, something that would be recommended to the town council to say, we think this is important and attention should be paid, and, you know, people should understand, you know, that, hey, if there's a flood, you don't go downtown, but if there's a fire, you do. And, and, you know, just the whole context of evacuating, again, Mr. Lando was pointing that, that if you're not comfortable living in a red flag fire danger environment, when they're, when that's taking place, maybe you should, you know, go visit friends down in Santa Barbara or someplace like that. I mean, there's pre-evacuation, so there's, there's elements that could come into place...
...the park, I was going to say the park.
Yeah, someplace a lot more fire safe than that, but in any event... But in any event, so that's one of the items. Item nine, or 10, conservation, develop a creek master plan with implementing programs and funding sources for restoring creeks and protecting habitat in the planning area. And there are a number of programs in the general plan. I mean, we're blessed to have creek resources in Fairfax. At the same time, you know, you walk next to those so-called creeks and you realize just how constrained they are, and, you know, today I was looking at them and they're just loaded with sediment. And, you know, you wonder, hey, you know, how are we doing in terms of the dealing with our endangered salmonid populations? Are there things we could do? They did do the fluvial, excuse me, the, let's see, the geomorphic assessment of the town of Fairfax was an older study. Other jurisdictions are undertaking efforts to try to be fish-friendly and to respect and enhance the stream environment. And so if there's time and willingness and resource to do so, it would be appropriate for the town, in staff's opinion, in the Commission's top 10 views, to do so. And under housing, and this is interesting because this bleeds into not only the general plan implementation item, but something that occurred in the zoning discussion, zoning amendment discussion. And this is where they say, staff will review and consider updating parking standards for review, possible approval, allow for more flexible parking requirements to allow and facilitate infill transit-oriented mixed-use development. Well, some of this is anticipatory to things that the state has already done with respect to ADUs and JADUs. That's accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And as your Commission is aware, I would say approximately two-thirds of the residential properties in town can now put in an accessory dwelling unit, which, provided it meets zoning setbacks and certain other standards. There's no discretionary review, and they don't have to put in any parking either. Furthermore, they talk about conversion of, this is Senate Bill 35, which is in law. We'll get into this at a future meeting, but I'm sure several of your Commissioners have reviewed that. So the reality is, is in some ways, the state's saying, hey, we're going to do this little flexible parking standard thing for you. And, you know, this is really important to facilitate infill, affordable housing, and, you know, in fact, a matter, these type of smaller units on properties, due by their nature, tend to be affordable, the limited size, et cetera. So that's happening at the state level. They're already dictating the parking standards, relaxing parking standards, allowing conversion of garages, using tandem parking, parking and front yard setbacks. The real question is, you know, is the town interested in looking at four properties where people aren't putting in second units, where maybe they just want to do an expansion, add a bedroom, et cetera? What is our position on things like utilizing tandem parking or uncovered parking? I mean, that's another example of, there's places where it's a heck of a lot, well, it's easier to put in uncovered parking than it is to put in covered parking. So this would bleed into the next topic when we start talking about zoning streamlining. Wrapping up, as I noted in the staff report, all of these are richly deserving of program attention. Likely, even if the Town Council were to, you know, give us a thumbs up on all of it, and we threw in the streamlining, we're not going to be able to address all of them. But we would certainly come back to your Commission and start outlining a work program and saying, you know, this is what it's going to take in terms of staff resources, consultant resources, budget, things like that. So I'm interested in hearing what your comments are on all of these. This is an opportunity to kind of get a more refined focus on each one of these and the language that we would be using in a report to the Town Council. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with any Commission questions for staff before we see if there's any public comment.
Just a question going to your last statement. When we look at these, are we looking at these from a standpoint of just what we can accomplish for the next couple of years? We've both seen on that, really, and we've got some things on here, and we know we can't do them all. Any year, I mean, shouldn't that kind of be your focusing, your last comment about referring everything to the council?
That would be a question that would be very much in front of the Planning Commission as soon as we get direction from the Town Council, and likely the Town Council may ask that same question. I believe the preference is that, yes, it would be something that, well, we certainly would initiate work on it. And in terms of what we would attempt to provide as deliverables, we would break up the larger-scale programs into discrete elements and say, okay, where are we, how are we doing on these and move forward with those? A lot of these are very much deliverable within the next fiscal year. And as I said, things like the ridge, the visual resources map, that will be imbued in development project review or looking at clustering. I mean, you know, it's like, here's the general plan policy, here's the development, how are we doing, or, you know, what do we think? So, yes, it would be something that would be, what can we complete among the larger ticket items? You know, how do we break that up into work program elements and work on those and finish some of those?
Just a comment, and then a question as to whether we might be able to combine some of these things and whittle it down and indeed maybe get some, you know, most of this done this year. So I see like seven, eight A, and nine as not so much within the purview of the Planning Commission, but things that we might recommend. You know, that's my thing about people first, is these are all really important health, safety, public issues, seismic safety, the idea of a fire hazard abatement district, of course, and then the development of evacuation plans. That's not so much a Planning Commission thing, but I think from, and I wasn't here last meeting, so I kind of never weighed in on this, but those things are kind of my A-list, even though we don't have much to do with them. You know, those human safety, life-saving, those are the highest things, I believe, that this government does for people. So that's all the, so then the rest of those things is what we really need to talk about. You know, all the other stuff. And I think, I agree, it could be doable if the Town Council gets it, you know, gets going, and we can have workshops as necessary for the public to weigh in. And on number two, for example, there's a huge aspect to this that sort of deals with many viewpoints, land use program, visually significant areas. You may live in some place because you love it, nobody else knows it or understands it, but it's a visually significant area. So there may be 7,500 visually significant areas here in Fairfax, you know, possibly. So these, some of these things are really complex in that regard, I think.
Was there a question, Phil?
So can we combine those three items into sort of one public safety initiative? Takes about it? Well, yeah, they would be recommended to the Council sort of en masse to say, these are important priorities in the view of the Planning Commission, and that it would be great if the appropriate departments, specifically mainly fire, were working on this and, you know, getting information back. To a certain extent, they are, and especially the Fire Wise Program, the people in Upper Cascade are doing some really cool stuff. And the workshop that the people working on it, including Cindy, excuse me, Commissioner Swift, worked on in that presentation that Ray Moritz and Todd Lando did, really exceptional. And I hope we get the videotape of that. I've asked both of those guys for it because just a wealth of information. So that's something that, but we just sort of hand that to the Council and say, we think, you know, somebody's got to work, somebody should work on that, thank you very much, and then we're done.
Through the chair, I appreciate Commissioner Green's comment about those not really being direct purview of the Planning Commission, but I also like the way they've come together as recommendations to the Council. And I think, again, I'd like to, as you did, Ben, compliment yourself and staff on really calling these out and identifying, I very much like the descriptors that you've added, identifying why that's relevant now and how we could better focus our energies within these broader categories, and, which I'm sure we'll do moving forward after it goes by Town Council, where we'll, I think, by default, Commissioner Green, some of those fire and police-led activities will sort themselves into other places, though we may still have some educational roles involved there. So I like the way, I like the way this is, and--
Do you have a question?
No.
Does anybody else have a question before I open it up to the public? Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on the program priorities? And if you could say your name and where you're from, and if you could please keep it somewhat brief, thanks.
Lauren Tamkin.
No, hit your button, but don't get too close because it kind of does weird things if you're too--
Okay. I'm Lauren Tamkin, live here in Fairfax. Obviously, one of my main big concerns is the development here in this town. Not a big fan, I'm not even remotely a fan of what's going on up at the wall. And wondering how this works? Does the public at any point in time get to vote on what happens up there at all? Just wondering if the public, you know, people that live here in Fairfax, have a say about what gets built up there? And when does that happen? Before or after it's built? Yeah, because once these things are done, it's done forever. They don't ever come down again. So it's really critical to me when we get to vote on this, and if we get to vote on this. I know this, somebody bought it. I'm really upset that Open Space didn't buy it. But somebody bought it, and now they get to do whatever they want because it's theirs now? I just don't know the process on this. And I like to be able to weigh in on it, and I'd like to be able to tell all my friends to weigh in on it, too. Nobody's even here. You know, I have to say, this does go on a long time. I mean, we had a whole row of people here. I don't know if they were wanting to weigh in on anything, and they got discouraged and left. But maybe we need to get the public in more than you are, not wait an hour for someone to speak before someone can ask a question. I prefer if we do it with each one that you propose, you number one, number two, number three. I mean, somebody should be able to weigh in on what you're saying at number one, and then stop, go again at number two, and then people get to weigh in on number two. Those are two completely different subjects. And I have to say, number three went on for a really long time. So I'm just curious concerning number one. Like I said, when and how does the public of Fairfax get to weigh in on what happens up on the wall? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak? Thank you. If you could say your name and where you're from, if you like, and--
Thank you. Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, Fairfax. I want to thank and commend you all for making, dealing with the historical nature of our town, a priority. And I would like to see an inventory done, and perhaps even a redistricting done of a certain part of our downtown, to make it a historical district with a necess, whoop, with a need to have some sort of a design review of anyone's plans to change something down there, to give us some sort of a cohesive image. I also am happy that you're dealing with the issue of light pollution. Yeah, I think it's really important right now, and we always have been a forward-moving and thinking town. However, if we're dealing with that, we might have to redo all the streetlights that went in recently. I had to buy light-blocking drapes in order to be able to sleep through the night because of the streetlights that had been recently put in. Regarding the Wall property, how did we get to the point? I was walking around town talking to people last fall, and I talked to a Realtor, longtime Fairfax resident, who you all know, I'm sure, who said, oh, that'll never be developed because of the zoning. It would cost too much to put roads and utilities into those 10-acre parcels. UR 10 has protected that land essentially as open space for about 40 years because the intent of the zoning is one house per 10-acre parcel. So looking at this issue of putting clustering development in there seems like a backdoor approval of this development, and it doesn't feel right. How did this person even think that he could spend all this money going against our zoning? We also have ridgeline ordinances, and I'm glad that you all want to strengthen them, but the pictures that I saw of the development, these houses are all sitting on the ridgelines. So I don't know how that happened. And I would like to see it, I would like to see it not happen. I don't think he is entitled. That property was very inexpensive, and it was undeveloped for all those years because of the expense of developing it while adhering to the zoning. I don't think we owe him anything, and I think that we shouldn't just hand him this birthday cake on a silver platter. And again, thank you for the historical work.
Thank you. I guess I'm gonna, if you make it really brief, please.
I just want to throw out there, is there not some kind of per capita in a town that has one road going in and out concerning safety measures in an emergency, getting in and out of here? Is there not an amount of people that are allowed to live in a small town when it's not safe to be able to get in and out in an emergency? So that's my question.
Can you turn the mic off now? Sorry, thanks. And I'm just going to take a quick stab at answering some of the questions that you both raised. As our Planning Director reported to us, you know, we are at incredibly early stages of the proposed development of the Wall property. And there will be numerous opportunities for the public to get involved. I believe I heard the first upcoming public meeting is going to be the Open Space Meeting on the 22nd. And there are plans for further public workshops and sessions with the public, and of course, further Planning Commission meetings. What's happening, I think, is the first step is the environmental impact report or review. And our Planning Director was saying, we're going to be looking at that, you know, piece by piece over like the next year. So it's going to take a lot of time, and we're going to hope that the public is very engaged in this whole process. The public hearing's over, so this is one way now. I'm just going to tell you, and that's it. And then in terms, so now I've lost my train of thought, so--
Long process, it'll take years.
But there was, Deborah was asking, okay. So because we are going to go through that, I guess that'll just be my answer. And now I will-- And now I will bring it back to the commission and see if anybody else wants to weigh in with their thoughts on this incredibly big list of chores we have ahead of us.
Okay, I'd like to comment on project number one. I mean, I've already said, you know, there's this human-level A-list that we're not dealing with that much. But part of the historical resource preservation, it deals with the depth of the look and feel of Fairfax, which is very special. We've had people coming from all over the Bay Area testifying at our hearings that they can get away from it all. This is the place to be, this is the entertainment capital, et cetera. And we have musicians all over the place here, and we have, Irving Berlin used to play in a tree up in the old days, in the '30s. So we have a big history here. Part of why we need to, though, in my opinion, concentrate on this historical preservation, especially of the downtown, is Government Code 65915, which is the density bonus exemption for historical projects that are registered in a certain way. And I think what we want to do is aim for that if we really are serious about our historical preservation, because of things like what we're seeing coming down from the state. So that is my comment about one. Number two, if you want me to go down the list, I don't know if you want this.
I would like to hear you, what you have to say.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Number two is, you know, visually significant areas of Fairfax lie everywhere. You can suddenly be walking through a forest and come upon a tree surrounded by some kind of mushroom, but it's fascinating.
But I'm going to interrupt you on that one. It's a term of art in the general plan, check it out.
Yes, okay. In any case, that's a fairly complex thing, and I recommend kind of a workshop, perhaps, on that one, what those are. On the open space idea, you know, I agree with that really completely. So really have nothing to say about that. Preserving housing, you know, take a look at Beverly Hills and West Hollywood's anti-mansionization ordinances. They, people were doing exactly what you described down there, and they're, believe it or not, they're stopping it, even though they love mansions down there. So take a look at that idea on the housing program. That'll help us, you know, no net loss, that'll help us a lot there, that idea. Don't know what's happening with Victory Village. I guess we've enabled it all we can, and so, okay. The housing program, I think, you know, okay, I did kind of a study way back when I was on the Affordable Housing Committee before I got on this Planning Commission, and I kind of redrafted some other cities' ordinance. It's good to specify what we can of density bonus requirements. For one thing, developers coming in would like, it would be good for them to see it. You know, we don't have a lot of those, but whoever may come up. And for another thing is, we can get some of our own local, you know, regulations in place, look and feel, especially where we have the design review aspects. I think we get quite a bit of leniency there, but maybe not after, after some of the recent new laws. On land use, you know, we need ordinances there. We need to develop a whole system of preserving neighborhood scale and character, rebuilding structures when destruction has occurred. And I think one of the comments here was last week, last month, that it depends on what kind of disaster you have. Fire isn't earthquake, isn't, you know, isn't wind and flood. So I mean, we just need to come up with three or four, you know, sort of, maybe the structure would be good to have a set, if the Town Council thinks of it this way. You know, what do we do in fire? What do we do here? What do we do there? And perhaps signage, as was suggested, Ben, you suggested, you know, this way to the evacuation point, and maybe a color-coded system of red for fire, you know, stuff like that. We're not going to have a tsunami, but in Hawaii, they have this, all over the place, you know, tsunami direction, evacuation signs, walking this, driving that, et cetera. So take a look at what they do. Seismic safety program, you know, as I said, I think seven, eight A, and nine could come off the list. Obviously, we need to concentrate there, though, on government buildings, markets, and places of assembly seismic safety. So those buildings are there for people to go to if they have to, right? That's, and I think that one comment was made, we don't know the situation on seismic safety in our fire department. Well, we got to find, you know, we should know, and fix. Seismic safety, okay. Sorry if I'm taking too long. Seven B, the conservation program, you know, absolutely. I mean, dark sky, you spend some time in San Francisco or LA, and you try to, you know, see a star, it's good luck, even at night. Safety, you know, we have, absolutely, you know, these are, these are important things. Open space, yeah, I'm with you 100%. Number nine, safety, you know, I think that's one of those things that could be off the list. And 10A, conservation, absolutely. You know, the talk about the domino theory that Mimi discussed last month, this goes along with, obviously, you know, fixing creeks and flooding are definitely, I mean, if the creeks are full of silt, the water doesn't have much to rise, and so we have to be careful of our fish. I actually once saw a fish coming way up creek in Mill Valley, couldn't believe it, there it was, it happens. And housing, you know, we just have to review state law. We're going to go through a whole process, I think, this year of redoing that. But we, you know, we should really have, where we can, we should have regulations that make sense according to the state law, and not, not kind of just let things, some of your ideas on, later on, on item three, I'm not going to necessarily agree fully with. So that's all my comments, thank you.
So going through the list, item one, historical preservation, I think that's something that's important that we need to focus on in the next, in this working period that we're looking at, the next year or two. As was mentioned, that helps, that can help us address potentially state housing mandates in our historical, in our downtown area. So definitely want to pursue that. And along with that, though, what we need is an understanding of the local, state, and federal preservation designations and guidelines, so that we can determine the impact of those, you know, the pros and cons, how they affect, how they affect the town, how they would affect planning, you know, the benefits of those. So that, to me, goes hand in hand with doing the inventory, is getting that, that knowledge on that. Number two, yes, evaluating the visually significant areas. I think that's, should be a priority in this timeframe, as well as update, reviewing and updating the ridgeline ordinance. When we look at four and five for housing, what I was wanting with that, because what is in our agenda item is kind of an expansion of some of those, is I was looking at working on a density bonus ordinance, as was put forth by the town attorney in that presentation, and for all the reasons identified in that presentation, both for what it allows us and what it tells developers, what are important to the community when we talk about density bonuses. And I don't really, I'm not really concerned at this point with what the state may or may not come down with. I think we need, as a town, to pursue our own density bonus ordinance now, and then, you know, see what the state does. I think there's going to be things that the state may not address, that still falls under density bonus, and I think we should look at what's important for the community when we have to deal with that. Six, disaster recovery, I think we should start working on that one in this timeframe, you know, defining what a disaster is and what triggers recovery, and how we deal with that, with rebuilding the community. Seven A, seismic safety, I'm not, I don't think that's a Planning Commission item, but I think the town needs to know for its public buildings and its government buildings, if they're retrofitted or not. I know the pavilion at one time, I don't think the pavilion would be a facility that potentially could be used for people to congregate if they have to evacuate, potentially. I don't think it's seismically retrofitted, and I know, I believe there was a group of the community at one point in time, looking at trying to preserve and fix up the pavilion. But I think knowing the status of our public and government buildings is important. I don't think it's a Planning Commission item. Lighting, I agree on looking at lighting. We're going to have the dark skies presentation, and as we do that, we need to bring in, if we do address lighting, we also need to bring in and review the sign ordinance and lighted signs downtown. That should be a part of that. Eight and nine, the fire hazard abatement district and the fire evacuation plans, I would take off the table. Fire hazard abatement district, from what I understand, is a funding or a taxing entity, and I don't think we get into that at all, the fire evacuation plans. To me, you really can't address specific evacuation plans, because they're all going to depend on what the emergency is and how that emergency is unfolding, as to how we are told to evacuate or where we're told to evacuate. So I don't think you can necessarily write that down. Creek master plan, I think looking at the creeks is important, but I don't see that within this timeframe. I think, at one point, I think we said we would, down the road or down the fiscal year, evaluate where we are, look to the future workload and future fiscal years for working on these things. So that should definitely be on the table for that. And then review the town parking ordinance to include changing, you know, the size potentially of parking spaces and things like that. That was kind of a broader scope of what initially my concerns were with parking, my concerns with parking, and I know some of those things we'll touch in the, in Agenda Item Two. But my concerns with parking was that in the downtown area, we haven't had a parking survey to know how many parking spaces we have since 2003. And part of, I think, what is in the general plan is establishing a no-net loss on parking in the downtown area. So those were two aspects of that that I wanted to pursue.
Thank you. Michelle?
I appreciate the staff's time in putting together this succinct staff report. I think it was quite helpful. I'm in agreement, actually, with the idea of reformatting this as this goes forward to the Town Council to separate out Planning Commission items versus items for other people because, or other partners, or other departments, or other agencies, because I think that'll help to clarify what we're really asking for in terms of our own workload. I like the idea that we're starting to hear, that we're starting to go towards really clarifying almost under each one of these, what is the highest priority from each of these. In other words, I'm starting to hear, I like this idea, actually, of the historic districting, and, you know, maybe step one is the historic evaluation, and step two is the hillsides and preserving kind of the residential fabric. And maybe step three is this idea that we heard about, maybe with the visually significant aspects of it. So I'm recommending that we have specific deliverables that we're suggesting, so that if some are very far-reaching and some are near-reaching and a higher priority, that we try to get clear on what do we really want to have completed. I think that, I'm in agreement with everything else I've heard, so I don't want to repeat any of that. But one of the ideas that I had more on the housing, yes, I understand what we're discussing in here in terms of preservation of existing units, but I do agree with the comment that the public mentioned around kind of looking at existing units that are unprotected, and what does that mean? Meaning, I understand the interest in density bonus. I'm thinking about in-lu fees, or mandatory in-lu onsite, or really thinking about preservation of existing unit costs, and how does, how is that articulated in kind of policy going forward? We don't have the staff time to do rent control program, but I'm not sure how we're, we're dealing with, with that. Maybe it's more economy-based, and I wouldn't really, shouldn't really worry myself with it. But I don't know that I have any other comments. I'm in, I'm in agreement with everybody else. I think that a creek master plan is more like a future item, and that given the pressures that we're seeing right now and other applications coming in, I think I'm more, I'm more focused on kind of some of the immediate items, which is the conservation, the visual resources, and how that ties to more neighborhood scale things. I'm, the affordable housing parking issue, I am interested in addressing parking, but I think we'll get that, to that in the next Agenda Item. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Anyway, I think that it's good that we've narrowed it down to as many items from where it was, so I think, yeah, the next step would be to get the Town Councils, give them a chance to weigh in on it as well. And I think Phil and Michelle's comment about, and I think Cindy also, separating out really what is for others versus Planning Commission work is, would be a good thing to add into the report that goes to Town Council. I know of some additional information on seven A with the seismic program, because I've been involved with the seismic retrofit at the pavilion, and it's, it's been going through a FEMA process that's taken quite a bit of time, and it's an archaeological site, so it took a long time to get all the, all the different parties involved to agree on how we're going to move forward. So that's now been approved, and we're ready now to start the process of evaluating and -- designing foundations and getting souls reports so that we can start the retrofit of the pavilion. So, and I'm sure that there's probably inventory of other buildings in town. I don't know what they are, but I'm sure there's, probably Garrett can probably shed some light on some of this, some of those. But otherwise, that's, I concur with the comments the other commissioners have made.
I think we've said it all and we should send it along and we'll have plenty of time to work out, fine tune the details as we move forward, given what our time constraints will be moving forward. Are we going to talk about number two?
Okay. Yeah, but I get my turn too before we move on. So on the, let's see, I'm going to go through each of these programs from the general plan as well, or just the ones I have something to say. I agree with what everybody said about the historic preservation, about preserving the visually significant areas, about the ridgeline ordinance. On number four, on the housing, I want to add, we did have an application which we heard and ruled on and approved of a duplex turning into a single family unit and we, our hands were tied. We couldn't really do anything to prevent that. So that's in my mind significant regardless of the deed restricted status, that the idea of no net loss of housing is really important here. On number five, I'm open to ways in which we can further protect Fairfax from the density bonus rights that the low income developers and affordable income developers seem to have. I appreciate that there is a fine line here between trying to encourage affordable housing and trying to keep our own town's character, and I appreciate that it's difficult. I have, I will need to be reminded about Katie's conclusions on how we go about doing I'm down with the number six, preserving the character of the, of the town after wide-scale destruction has occurred. I'm also in agreement with kind of organizing items that are not necessarily planning commission items in a separate section. I'm also in agreement with moving forward on the lighting issues. The one that I want to take a little bit more time to talk about is eight B, which is the open space provision of the general plan. And for those of you in the audience, I think this is one that, you know, you were talking about. If development plans are presented to the planning commission for parcels on the open space inventory list, the commission should encourage cluster development on a small segment of the parcel with the provision of an easement on the undeveloped portion to create designated open space. And I was involved in both the open space committee and the general plan drafting when these provisions were drafted. And, you know, I was initially concerned about it, but I think what won me over here was the idea that if you have a large area of open space that can be developed, you want to limit how many roads and driveways are crisscrossing across that piece of land. So if you can cluster them in one area with the idea that the remainder of the property be undeveloped and preserved as undeveloped land, I think that was the idea here about the clustering. I am quite taken aback frankly by the idea that you would lay like a grid across the hundred acre property and say, well, these are 10 acre on a grid and sorry, if that lot's not buildable, you can't build there because this is a grid. I don't think there's anything in our town code that would prescribe that kind of approach. And frankly, it would be offensive to me if somebody were encouraged to take 100 acres of open space and build a whole bunch of roads all over it in order to maximize their profits because they can't cluster. You know, and I hear what some people in the town I think are concerned about is that, well, that would probably make it impossible to build as many houses as you could otherwise build if you cluster. And again, I think this is, you know, somewhat unconscionable of us because I think we're taking a gamble at how easy or difficult it might be to put 10 houses on 100 acres in a grid-like fashion where you literally had to have a 10 acre buffer around each house kind of. I mean, why? If, you know, yeah, maybe on a particular piece of land, they couldn't develop those 10, but then you've got other pieces of land that might come up where you could. And we can't write laws specifically designed for specific people and property. We have to write laws that are fair and cover every conceivable situation. And frankly, when we were talking about this issue and there was a lot of discussion about it during the general plan development, we were, you know, we weren't thinking like, oh, how do we write this so we maximize some developers' profit? No, we were thinking, how do we write this so we're ensuring that the planning commission is considering leaving undeveloped open space and maximizing what's left for the deer and the raccoons and, you know, us who are enjoying that open space? If we're, if we can limit the development of 100 acres to 10 acres and have 90 acres of all contacted untouched land, you know, I, I'm open to hearing other arguments and I welcome that from the public, but I also want people to pay attention to these issues because I think this is important and I think making sure that we maximize preservation of open space is really important. And that's where that one comes from. So I'm going to go on. The safety, we've talked about not being in our ambit. On the conservation of the creek master plan, I definitely agree that this is one that could take a lot longer. I would like to see us identify what the stages of the plan might, you know, to do this might be so that we could see if there are baby steps we could bite off and, and get the ball rolling and not just say, oh, this one's going to take so long, let's not even keep it on the list, you know? I want to see us at least make baby steps and a little bit of progress. And I also agree about the parking and not having any net loss of parking. But I, I don't agree about the issues of people close to the corridors because, you know, I mean, this is one of the things with the state laws is that if you're within a certain distance from a bus stop, you know, you don't necessarily need the parking. And while I, I agree that pretty much everybody, you know, who has, who has to have a job has a car or, you know, a lot of people have cars. But I also, you know, I travel on the bus to the city and I think there's a lot of people on the bus to the city and I'm on, just on one of those buses. There's like eight of them, you know? They go in every morning. So I disagree about not being concerned about trying to locate our, you know, what little development hopefully we will have in terms of infill development. That's the whole idea behind that part of the general plan is infill development so that we are close to those transit hubs. So, okay, those are my thoughts. So now we get to go back to agenda item two.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And staff appreciates the comments on agenda item three and will be working hard to develop the summaries along the lines that the commission suggested. So the precedent to all the really important items, general plan related in making, getting some good traction on those in this next fiscal year is trying to get a little bit more staff time to focus on those items. And we had a number of examples of what type of development takes place or is reviewed by the planning commission, 15 square foot additions to a house, things like that. And that's not to say that the planning commission doesn't add value to that discussion or review. It's simply to point out that you can't do that and do these other things both. There's just a limited amount of resource and if you're going to take it up doing smaller things, you're never going to get around to the big things. So the conversation that the planning commission and staff have had over several meetings, and this originated, you will recall, from kind of a zoning ordinance amendment list that was half planning, well, partially planning commission and partially staff. And what this staff, staff report is, it looks in part at what the commission was discussing. For example, the 50% remodel item, and it's too bad that S Commissioner is not here tonight because she had some specific insights last time about the fire department definition and kind of hadn't, she could focus in on the nuances of why those little subtle differences make a difference and which way this should go. That's a planning commission item. We kind of gave our best crack at it. What we were focusing on is what kind of gives us a little bit more ability to say, okay, rather than just waiting for this one application that's been sitting here for five years and here it comes and now we have to completely respool and try to reinvent the wheel, we can say, we're going to put some time into some of these other programs. And so that leads into what we could do to limit the time and application remains incomplete. And it's noted that at least two jurisdictions in the county do address stale applications, for lack of a better word. And several benefits are noted for doing so. And staff would recommend that these be specifically deemed to have expired. Withdrawing applications like San and Selmo has on their books raises procedural questions and notice and all that stuff. It's better to simply say that you have a certain amount of time to complete a project. We're not wedded to what the county's talking about within 30 days, but that would be analogous to what we would be looking at, which is to simply say that you have a period of time to complete the application on a project, and if you can't do so, it would be withdrawn. They would have an opportunity to pick up their plans. After that period lapsed, those plans and application materials would be recycled. We would refund whatever money is still unexpended in the preliminary review of the project. And that's something that-
Can I just ask, ask just a really brief clarification question about that is this is limiting the time that a technically incomplete application can, can be suspended like, right? Or before it can be deemed complete? You're not talking about the project itself, the building project? That's not what we're discussing. We're talking about a technically incomplete application.
Right. We're talking about the planning phase, although we recognize that there has been concern expressed in the past about projects which have received building permit approvals. That's a separate topic and is worthy of discussion on some other venue.
Yes, thanks.
So it's, it's interesting too because as your commission may be aware, our current town engineer is preparing to curtail his activities and we're into a transition period. And one of the things in the discussion we've had with him is this notion that technical studies definitely come with expiration dates. So when somebody's doing a geotechnical report, for example, they will explicitly state in many instances that this information is only valid for say, a two-year period or 18 months or until any regulations change. And so this is another problem with projects that hang out there. They're five years old and in one case it was 11 years old as we know. And so you've got all your technical studies that are invalid. Well, do you think an applicant who thinks that they have an active project is going to be very happy about being told, you know, that X thousands dollars you spent on that, that's void, you need to do that again in the middle of your project? So it's another example of, it's, it's time to move forward or just accept that circumstances have dictated that you're not ready to take this project to completion. And we believe this is an important one. There are a number of projects that are, that are stale right now. We're not going to go into the specific addresses, but it's just something where we get a current application, we're focused on it, we become very knowledgeable in a short period of time, and that's the time to do the review, make the recommendations, get to a decision and then move on. In terms of other things, like I said, this 50% remodel, it's a planning commission item. We should probably wait until Commissioner Parva Gonzalez is ready to weigh in on what the relative merits. This doesn't really save staff time one way or another. Covered parking, tandem parking, parking in the side yard setback. Probably the biggest difference would be the covered parking. And we understand that historically there were certain developments that came in where they managed to avoid developing any parking at all and that there were valid reasons why the town developed their regulations vis a vis covered parking and tandem parking and parking in the side yard setbacks. The discussion here is simply that, number one, as pointed out in item three, one of the priority items, is that the general plan says, look, let's look at ways to get more flexible parking regulations. The current regulations we have are kind of the opposite. I mean, many, many communities say, we don't care if you do covered or uncovered parking. You know, people may have a reason why they, they don't want to do the uncovered parking. Similarly, parking in front yard setbacks on steep downslopes, things like that, those are often areas where flexibility is afforded to people. And indeed Fairfax has some recognition of that. Tandem parking is an interesting conversation because historically as Associate Planner Neil, excuse me, Senior Planner Neil, points out that if you look at many of the properties, they had the parking along the side in a tandem configuration. And this went away with the batch of regulations. So I think the question is for limited expansions, et cetera, should we move things out of the realm of variances or use permits and things like that? Find a way to make it a little bit easier, particularly to do uncovered parking, but also consider using it for tandem parking. It's also pointed out, as I did earlier, is that the state has already said, hey, if you've got an ADU within a half a mile of a bus line, you don't need to do any parking. And if you want to do tandem parking, fine. If you want to convert a garage, fine, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So it's one of those things where you've got two units on a property and the state's dictated this is how you approach parking. And then we're turning around to single family residents and saying, oh, but you know, for you guys, it's got to be covered, it can't be tandem, you know, this and that. There's a question of fairness. In other jurisdictions, we have heard that people are starting to come in under the flag of, oh, I'm doing an ADU and here's my little kitchen. And by the way, this is a building permit and, you know, it's 1,200 square foot addition and, but boy, it's going to be affordable housing. No such thing. It's just an extra kitchen. Maybe that gets stubbed out into an extra bathroom. No discretionary review, no parking. We don't want to end up in that situation where people are finding ways around our regulations by, you know, using state code to do that. Substandard parcel, this is another one where you look at it and it could be considered burdensome to people who by and large do live on substandard parcels for one reason or another. And the question is, do we really need to say that if your parcel is a foot too narrow, you have to do a use- you have to do a use permit before the Planning Commission? We're recognizing that that's a two-month process with all the expense, staff time it entails. And this is something that I believe we processed fifteen applications in the last year in regards to. So, this is something where, yeah, on a, pretty much on a per-meeting basis, on average, you're seeing things. And this is where we, I think we had a fifteen-square-foot addition, some really minor projects. We can address that as the town wishes. For example, if it's an addition that, for some reason, engenders a lot of public controversy, automatically refer it to the Planning Commission. And we don't need to have an appeal process where, you know, we have to go through the step once and then get it to the Planning Commission. Similarly, if it doesn't meet certain standards, other standards, setbacks, et cetera, all of the relevant zoning standards, perhaps except for lot width or lot size, it would go to the Planning Commission. It's still an administrative process, so it's still going to get noticed. The neighbors are going to know, have the same knowledge about a decision or a pending decision or a current application as they know now. So, the ability for the public to weigh in, bringing in some aspect that says that if it's really controversial, we just take it to the Planning Commission, all that can be factored in. It just recognizes that for the smaller projects, this is probably something if we're trying to figure out ways to get staff resources for doing other things, you could do that here with really insignificant differences in the quality of the decisions that occur and the ability for neighborhood comments, et cetera, to be addressed. The tree ordinance. I know that, it was interesting, we were looking at the genesis of this, and it was hard to tell whether it started with the Planning Commission or with staff. It certainly goes back several years. The question, you know, there's a few things that would seem to be very straightforward. If a tree's dead, and somebody who's certified says it's dead, or it's pretty obvious that it's dead, there's no reason why that needs to get any further review other than a certified arborist or somebody who's pretty competent to say, yeah, it's dead, it's a hazard, remove it. So, that's one of those things where, again, it's a more drawn-out process, you know, to a, to an, that may impede the ability to make a quick decision. I was going on a walk today, and I was looking at this tree that's probably sixty or seventy feet tall, that's leaning over Sir Francis Drake, and I'm going, boy, that's one windstorm away from really causing a mess on, you know, our primary arterial. So, you know, things like that, it should just be like, it's dead, here's a, here's the report, and approve it. A more challenging question is, to what extent does or could the Planning Commission take over responsibility for reviewing tree removal requests associated with larger developments? And there's arguments for and against. I mean, you, you tend to have people whose sole purpose on the Fairfax Tree Committee is to review such requests. On the other hand, these requests in the context of development projects that the Planning Commission has already reviewed tend to be a tail wagging the dog question where the Planning Commission has already deemed a substantial project to be acceptable, and here they go to the Tree Committee for their request to remove a tree. It puts the Tree Committee in a very awkward situation. The flip side of that is if we were to say that they have to go to the Tree Committee first, are they spending money on an application where the Tree Committee, once again, is saying, well, we don't like, we want this tree to be preserved? Maybe they could say, yeah, okay, take that, tens of thousands of dollars in some case worth of architectural fees, and, you know, revise it before you get to the Planning Commission, or, you know, the Planning Commission would know. It's also a question of how long you think that process could take. One consideration would be to get the appropriate training to the Planning Commission and have them consider the tree removal application concurrently with the other discretionary planning applications that the, the Commission is reviewing. I'm confident that the Commission could do a competent job of making decisions about trees. And frankly, a lot of these decisions are so imbued in project-specific, development-specific, structural-specific requests that there's no real good way to handle that unless you're looking at the project and saying, gee, you know, could you notch that building? What does that do to the interior, to the function of that building? What about pure and grade beam? The kind of things that the Commission can review at length and, and really come to a decision, and also respect and reflect the desire to protect trees, especially the ones that we deem, you know, valuable trees. Then we get to the topic about what permits could be processed ministerially. And we're talking about fence height variances, and, you know, the classic example is, it's a downhill property, the slope drops off drastically from the edge of the pavement. You've got a public right-of-way that's substantially wider, extends beyond where the paved street cross-section is. So, with a typical six-foot maximum fence height, fence height, you know, somebody out in the right-of-way is looking right into the yard with a loss of privacy. Under certain designated circumstances, you know, there's probably ways that we could say that this doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission, or it doesn't even have to be a discretionary application. You show us a survey that documents that your property line is X feet below the, the street grade, and you get to build a taller fence. We could even put design standards for those fences to try to address concerns about having kind of a, an ugly walled effect. Encroachment permits, you know, this could be a discussion about, virtually on hillside lots, something's going to be encroaching into the public right-of-way. So, the question is, is, again, is this, for, especially for the smaller projects, is this something that the Planning Commission needs to address in every instance? We would argue that there are certain structures that don't necessitate Planning Commission approval, simply for, and entry stairs. I mean, that's, that's an obvious one. You know, if you're starting from the street and going down to a house, and it's going through the front yard, and it's a stairway on grade, that type of thing, does it really require a two-month process to get before the Planning Commission to approve? Could we develop some, some design standards that say, hey, if it's less than X feet above grade, maybe it's a certain distance from neighboring properties? You know, that's a, that's an administrative, or, excuse me, a ministerial evaluation. Yeah, sorry. When we look at certain things that might exceed a fifteen-foot height limit, are there ways that we could allow that to be approved at a staff level? Accessory structures as living space is another example, where they're using those for home offices, art studios, yoga studios, meditation rooms. Could we allow that to be approved if they meet certain standards? For example, minimal or no plumbing. I mean, you get to use that space, you get to condition it, but, you know, we're, we're not turning it into a, necessarily into another dwelling unit, which, of course, according to the state, you don't get to review anyway, or we don't, you know, it's just, show us the building permit. So, that's, that's another, you know, changing the, the amount of review, seeing if we can consider things that don't need to go to the Planning Commission. Item number eight, discretionary permit expiration periods. And this is when applicants don't obtain a building permit within a given amount of time. And again, this is kind of one of those questions about, when your regulations change, should, if something isn't built, should that be subject to the new regulations? I mean, there's reasons why we come up with new regulations, new policies. It's only fair when something's on the books and somebody gets a completed project or approved project that, you know, we change it and, you know, the horse is out of the barn. But if it just sits there, there, there should probably be an expectation that, hey, five years from now, when we realize that we really have to address fire safety or something else that has become much more of a hot-topic item, should we be applying expiration periods on, on approvals of those? So, those are the, the main ones. As we have stated and will continue to state, this is one of these precedent to the non, well, the general plan implementation items, that we're working full-time, there's always stuff that's coming up that, you know, you just can't not focus on. So, if we're going to be looking at some of these general plan items, and I, I think we can all agree that those are very worthy work program items, we wish we could do all of them. So, the question is, is which of these, and under what context, could we perhaps figure out some kind of streamlining? Thank you.
If you could hold on, I'm going to start on this side.
No, I had a question for you as to how we should approach these in our discussion. Should we look at, after general questions, should we look at each one of these individually and kind of weigh in on them and, and vote or whatever on each one individually versus what we did with the other agenda item where we all gave kind of comments on everything? My thinking is that tackling each one of these individually might be a better way to go. Just my thoughts.
Anybody else have a opinion, contrary opinion?
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. We need to discuss each, each one of these, I think. It would make more sense to go through one, all of us, and then the other one. So, I kind of agree with that idea, that approach. What is the town council looking for from these?
My guess, and, and I haven't had, had conversations, because obviously, this is still at the Planning Commission level, but they would want specific recommendations and rationales for them, and perhaps a kind of a prioritization of what they feel comfortable with. They will likely tell us what they feel comfortable with, if anything.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, was, was the intent to go through these and make our final recommendations this evening?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so let's, let's start with the, number one, consider an ordinance limiting the time an application can remain incomplete. Somebody want to start with their thoughts?
Can I go this time first? Okay, I think in general, it's a good idea, but I would, a question I have is, will the applicant be notified that his application is in jeopardy of being withdrawn if they don't act on it? I think that would be, they, they should be informed of that, so they have the opportunity to submit the additional materials if they're able to. And the other is that maybe 180 days is a good timeframe, similar to the building, building permit application time limits.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I agree with what, with what Laura said, too. I think we, I, I agree with what Laura said. I, I think we need to provide notice to these applicants, you know, however, that could be within some reasonable period before, if it's 180 days expires, so they have a chance to submit something, you know. In every agreement, there's usually sort of a notice of breach and a chance to cure kind of aspect to it. So, I think that, that needs to be built in. Otherwise, I, you know, I, I think they should, you know, there's, there's a term for this, but I won't say it here in public, but it's sort of, you do something or you get off something, and, you know, you, you just have to do that. Thanks.
Are we talking here about applications for anything? So, if I apply for a sign permit or a use permit?
Any discretionary application.
And you never complete your application, and staff send you a couple of letters, and you never show up? Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it's a good idea, and I think somebody, you know, once, if this were to go in effect, and if somebody applied for a discretionary permit, I'm assuming that at the time they apply for a discretionary permit, they're going to be given information as to the timeframes and what would happen if they don't meet those timeframes, as well as what you said about kind of a warning as they get down to that period of time.
I'm in support of the proposal. In fact, I would even go broader and say I'd be in support of a incomplete application expiration, approved planning project expiration, or building permit, you haven't pulled, and continuous construction expiration.
Norma?
I agree with everybody.
I do, too. All right. Norma, do you want to start on number two?
I like matching Ross Valley's fire 50 percent remodel definition.
Okay, I would disagree with that. I would keep them separate. One of the differences that I see between the two is the inclusion in ours of a bedroom. And the bedroom, I mean, I think fire has a purpose and an end game plan for what, why they're defining theirs the way they are, and it's different than, I think, what we historically have looked at for us denoting the bedroom aspect to it, then brings in issues of required parking. And I think we probably might all be in agreement that we have more cars and parking's an issue, and, you know, what we can do to minimize that is good. So, I would keep them separate for the purpose of the bedroom inclusion. And I'm not sure that anything else in there, I'm not aware of what the other nuances may be that might be different between the two, but that's one that I see.
Actually, I do agree on the bedroom, the new bedroom as well.
I do, too, actually. I think that's an important factor. But, you know, I see, I see the difference between the sort of definition substantial remodel and the 50 percent floor area as one is, leaves a lot of discretion, the substantial idea, whereas 50 percent remodel is quantifiable, and you can, you, so, that's, to me, that's the difference. So, it just kind of depends on how you want it to be. But I think in addition, I mean, the ordinance, the 08020 definition also includes, does it include the bedroom?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we want, I think that's important, because if you're going to add a bedroom, that's a fairly significant, usually, I think, most, you probably agree, right? And Laura, I mean, architecturally, if you're adding a bedroom, that's a fairly significant aspect to it. So, it's, it's probably good to have kind of both, the 50 percent remodel gives, give that and the bedroom thing. So, that's, that's where I'm at on it.
I was, I'm not sure if I was interpreting all of this correctly, but the way I was looking at this is, we had one issue, which was the definition of what is the 50 percent remodel, and then the second aspect of it was, what was it triggering? And to me, there seemed to be two separate things. One was triggering of conformance of parking, and then the other was triggering sprinklering of the entire or a portion of the house that was still unclear to me. So, I like the idea of clarifying the definition. I think that's critical. In my mind, if it's going to relate to parking, then to me, the remodel should be directly related to increasing occupancy, which is bedroom area. If they're, they're just doing improvements to some of the other things that were defined in here, beams and girders and columns and joists, I didn't see that necessarily related to parking, because we're starting to address parking and how we're doing that later on dis- starting to address parking and how we're doing that later on discussion, and I'll bring up my points related to that later. But regarding sprinkling, you know, I think that that relates to a whole lot of issues that aren't addressed here, like how does that relate to buildings in or out of a fire zone, or how does it relate to occupancy and building type and some of that? So I was feeling very conservative, like I like the idea of the definition clarity, but I wasn't really clear how it related to costs that might be unrelated to necessarily the improvement type, because I don't really see a nexus between re-sprinklering an entire building and doing some of the small building changes. So I was being more conservative.
Linda, can you please clarify, if I understand currently how things go, it's usually because a use permit's needed that triggers, you know, review by the applicant, by the planning commission? But is there something, if technically they met the site area, the width, the setbacks, and everything, and they were adding a bedroom, they'd have to have review, and they weren't adding 50%?
Did you say, and they already had parking?
Yeah, they had a parking and all that. Let's just say, they met all the requirements, and they weren't adding 50%, but they were adding a bedroom, because, and they met everything else, would it still need review?
It wouldn't unless they're in, they're in the hillside area on unstable soils and they're excavating a certain amount of soil. Our HRD ordinance kicks them in if they're on a certain slope and they're excavating a certain amount, then they do have to come to you because you review the excavation and drainage impact.
Right. So my point is, is that I think, I think that we all agree that adding a bedroom is an important aspect of why it should come to the plan review, but maybe we can put that requirement in somewhere else that's not 50% remodel. So, that was the point, but otherwise, I think it's good to have consistency between agencies, because as some, as a design professional that works in many jurisdictions in Marin, it's really confusing and difficult to keep them all straight, and there's little nuances in different towns. And so I think the more consistency that we have, especially, especially with our fire department, that's a whole different agency, the better.
I think it would be easy to separate the bedroom issue from the 50% issue, because all it would have, there would have to be a section inserted somewhere in the code that says, if you're trying to add, add a bedroom or increase the number of bedrooms on a property that does not have the minimum parking requirements, you either need to provide the parking, or you get a variance from the planning commission. It could be separate. I'm not exactly sure why the attorney's drafted it that way. When you look at the original ordinance, it's, it's not quite the way they ended up inserting it in the code.
Through the chair, can I just make a comment? And I kind of started out with the question of, are we really trying to finalize these and, and make a final recommendation tonight? I think it would be better if we have general comments and kick it back to you for review, and also wait for Esther to come. She had some serious issues. So I'm fine with everyone providing comments, but I wouldn't want it to be, this is our final, that's what I have trouble with.
But do you have trouble with that on all of these items, or just this particular one, because Esther isn't here?
The ministerial ones I have less issues with, but I do with the others.
Because I think in some of these, for example, for example, the first one we did with expiration of applications, I would think we're still going to, a question for staff, once we've said we agree with that concept, would you then be coming back to us with a recommendation as to the specifics of that change in the ordinance, for example, timeframes and things like that? So while we say here, we're all in agree, in agreement with that approach of making that change, would it still not come back to us with specifics?
Well, it would be a two-part discussion. The first is, in, for example, this notion about making sure that adequate notice is provided, which of course is, is an important thing. What we would, we could discuss that as a concept. I would recommend, rather than really getting into the nuts and bolts of, here's the code provision that we're proposing, I'd like to get some feedback from the town council, because I have got zero comment from them. I mean, it hasn't been referred to them, so obviously they haven't commented. It's, and I'd really like to see what their inclination is, because I recognize that Fairfax does things a little differently. I mean, all these planning commission items, that's unusual. And so I really want to get a sense of, hey, what do the decision makers feel? You know, you guys are policy advisors, and we'll be crafting the language, working with staff, but I'd like to get buy-in. And so I, what I prefer to do is to say, hey, council, this expiration of applications, we would want to make sure that applicants are aware, maybe in their initial submittal materials, that it says, please be advised, or, you know, that projects which are non-responsive to an incompletion determination letter for a period of X days, you know, pick a day, pick a length of time, will be notified that their project is in jeopardy of being withdrawn if they don't respond, et cetera. And then get the council feedback to say, no, we don't like to expire applications, and then we just drop it, right?
Okay, so what we're doing here is giving you, our vote on each of these, that you're then going to take to the council, and then come back to us with that.
Correct.
Okay. So on the second item then, of the definitions, since I think in part that was generated, I mean, it doesn't save any time, that was, you know, for you all, that was an item that I think was generated by the planning commission, perhaps on that one, since you said, you know, we have a planning commissioner here that had concerns, that we just wait on that discussion until she's here, and just go on to number three.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Let's start with Phil on number three.
Okay, number three, substandard parcels.
Or, or, I'm sorry, are we going to 2A, B, C? Sorry.
2A, B, C, okay. You know, I, I'm kind of in agreement with covered parking, tandem parking, and parking in the side yard setback. Well, no, I'm, I'm not as in favor of parking in the side yard setback. That one is a fire safety issue. You know, hoses being quickly dragged up a hill, and there's a car in the way, because it's parked in the side yard setback, I think that one needs to be a little stricter than just ministerial permit. So that's, that's my comment about that one. I mean, I had also, I also had a comment about number eight. Well, I don't know why it's eight, not six, but I guess there's a reason. I'm not sure what it is.
We haven't counted that one yet.
I know, I know. Well, because they kind of go together, but that's, that's, that's my problem with the parking, is the fire safety issue.
Okay, Cindy?
Okay, so I had some questions, and then some kind of comments about the staff report on this as well. One question is, how many applications do we see before us for parking in the side yard setbacks? Do we know?
I don't know the number, but we get them a lot, because a lot of our parcels are very narrow. The houses take up, you know, block access to the rear, and so unless you put all your parking right in front of your house, often people want to put, encroach into that side yard.
So if you read the staff report. Sorry. And then going back to the code, our parking ordinance, I noted, and this is kind of a question, when we talk about ADUs, and I had mentioned this, our parking ordinance says that tandem parking shall not be used in conjunction with a parking space required for residential second unit. So we know that the ADU
Supersedes that.
Supersedes that. And I know parts of the code have been updated to reflect the new ADU, but this part wasn't. So I kind of have a process question as to, when we have a change, like the ADU ordinance that we went through, and I'm sort of remember that all of that had all the different code sections that needed to be updated, I guess, what's the process and why would this one not have been updated?
It was probably a cleanup oversight, would be my guess. It's just something that, you know, in any kind of complex code, there's going to be things that you just go, ooh. And so it would be something that we should clarify and remove, because obviously the state code trumps. And even though we've adopted our local version of that, we're still, in that regard, internally consistent too, which is, you know, you never want to be that near local code.
So we have like a administrative process with staff to, once we see these, to gather them up and send them to the council to say, we need to make these changes.
Yeah, what we would probably do is, is take it to the commission, commission says, yes, please do this, and we take it to the council.
So another question, has covered parking traditionally equated to a garage, kind of historically, or no?
No.
So, okay, there are a lot of carports out there. Okay. And on the staff report, page four, there's, on the last paragraph, it says, town code also allows any required third guest parking space to be in tandem, to be in tandem with one of the required main parking spaces for residential unit. So what I believe that means is that, what that should have said was, when we have two parking spaces required, then the third, if there's a guest parking space, that's what's considered the third parking space, and that could be tandem. It's not that we would have three guest parking spaces.
That's correct.
Okay. And I believe those were allowed only in the front setback, when you did those, I think. I mean, for guest parking spaces, when you're, when you're developing that type of thing.
Talking new development or reconstruction?
Well, it's probably new development.
I mean, there's nothing in the code that says, I mean, if you had a whole new subdivision, you could put garages in the back and have your guest space in the back in tandem with the parking, but we just have never had any projects like that, because most of our houses are already existing. Most of them end up being in the front yard, as you just indicated, just because of how the development exists now.
So through the chair, does, I'm sorry, Cindy, does this apply to new developments?
New developments and 50% remodels, people are supposed to be providing additional parking if they're doing a 50% remodel or adding a bedroom, and they don't have the required parking.
New developments still require a garage and the covered parking and the whole nine yards?
Right.
Okay.
New developments require a garage?
One covered space. It doesn't have to be a garage, but it has to have one covered space, either a carport, doesn't have to be two cars, just one.
So covered, not a garage, okay. And when we've talked about the, like, state requirements and the new ADU, while, you know, that's mandating certain things with parking, it's not 100% mandate, though. I mean, there's still issues of fire safety and things like that, that there's discretion. I mean, you have to support that, but you do have that discretion when you look at those, that, you know, if there's a safety issue, then you may be able to, with support, deny that. So I just want, it's, there is that flexibility, but it has to be justified.
We would probably want to have a parking program and identify areas where, for example, existing roadway pavement width was inadequate, and it was really important to have parking on-site for the second unit. As near as I can tell, the thrust of the state is, we're visualizing a future that's beyond cars. I mean, because it's just so prescriptive to say, just ignore parking of cars. And so, yeah, we can probably put together a study that says, if it doesn't meet these standards, then you still have to put in parking, but, you know, that's its own work program. And, you know, right now, the state's basically saying, no, 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 if you're within a half a mile, you're going to take the bus, right?
I understand that, but when you look at the ADU, it says that such parking arrangements are not feasible based upon specific site or regional, topographical, or fire or life safety conditions. So all I'm saying is, it's not 100% given. If those issues apply, with justification.
Right. So the question is, do we want to make that a work program?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm not talking about the work program. I'm just saying, to clarify that it's not 100%. But I'll get off of that.
I wanted to tell you what the fire department told me, because when I first started here, I was told, oh, you can't have any structures, you know, that are within three feet of a property line, and the fire, because of fire. And the fire said, that is absolutely not because of us. We will get up the side of a house. We will go on the neighbor's property. We will push a fence over, whatever. So I'm not sure that parking in the, I'm not sure that we would have a strong case if we tried to say that you can't put, that you can't put parking in the side yard setback, because you have to leave a path for the fire to get up the side of the house. That's, I don't know that that would fly, but.
Yeah, or further, that you had to provide parking on-site. I mean, that's the challenge with SB 35, is it really is very prescriptive in saying, you know, this parking is no longer a concern. So, you know, I suppose we could say, the road width here is 10 feet wide, they're not going to be able to park in the street.
Okay, so off of that note, I'm okay with the covered parking requirement, eliminating that, tandem parking, perhaps, but I would want to see, still see side yard setback applications come. I think, you know, we're talking about what comes to us, and I think one of the things that is a concern for me, and one of the things that the planning commission does, is have that public discussion on items that could be a concern to the community. So I'm very leery of taking away that, that ability to have a planning commission meeting, and having that duly noticed and sent out to folks, and have them come, and be able to provide their public comments. I don't think that with some of these things, if we do them in other ways that we've talked about, where they're noticed, let's say, to neighbors, or they're noticed in other venues, that it is as well-publicized, and it doesn't provide and result in the same community hearing that I think we, when you talk about Fairfax and kind of its uniqueness, that we appreciate those opportunities for the public to come and, and speak to that. And I think side yard setbacks is something that would be, is a concern to the community, so I would leave those coming to us.
The parking in the side yard setback.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this one?
I have a few. I don't know if there's a way that we could say we would, could, would encourage covered parking, because, but, but if it's a hard
But if it's a hardship, you know, I'm thinking we've had a couple of cases, you know, we just had that one on Cypress, where it seemed kind of clunky and awkward to add. And now, and there's been other examples before, beforehand, but, I mean, but having a garage or carport is usually an asset to a property. So, I don't know if there's language we can, but I think that we should try to, you know, fit in parking wherever we can without having to have extra variances. And not, and I, and maybe I think we should say that we're not trying to reduce the amount of parking on, on, that we're still, they still have to meet the requirements of the code, but we just want to make it easier for applicants to be able to meet the requirements that are in the code.
I don't really have anything too much to add. I think, just commenting on some of Commissioner Swift's thoughts, you know, in terms of the role of the public, I'm not as concerned, I think, as you are about if we build in the ability for somebody who's objecting to ask for a hearing, if we give notice to the neighbors, those kinds of issues don't give me as many concerns, I think, as they pose to you. And if that's it on this one, maybe we could take a short break before the next one, number three. Thanks.
I'll do 10 scrolls.
So, coming back, and let's talk about the item number three on page five. We've got to get through. So does anyone want to talk about the substandard parcels item?
I can start if, anyway, yeah, this is kind of a bane of my existence, but anyway, I don't, but one thing that wasn't, I didn't see in the staff report was how, I think another site area, because I think that is another item where you meet all of the setbacks and the lot coverage and the FAR and all that stuff, but your site area is technically too small because you are the slope, which I think almost all parcels in Fairfax are on a slope. So, I'm not sure how, if that was addressed in the report here. But otherwise, yeah, I'd like to see if there's a way where we can, yeah, these 34 square foot additions can be approved much easier
Yeah.
on a substandard parcel.
Other comments?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. On the bottom of page five, you say, "Staff recommends that the commission recommend allowing projects that comply with all the regulations for the zone district the property is located in, with the exception of lot width, to be administratively approved by staff." And I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
Well, what this means is that if it's something that triggered discretionary application, Hillside Review or something like that, that would still involve a public notice, a discretionary project, you know, findings, et cetera, but it wouldn't involve the planning commission. So, it would have to be less than 50%. It would have to meet the setbacks, et cetera. And I would probably add what Commissioner Curling said, which was, and also for lot area.
But what is, would the exception of lot width mean in that paragraph? It almost...
Well, that meant if it were substandard with respect to lot width, then it would...
If that's the only thing that's non-conforming about a project and a property, that its parcel is substandard in size and width, but the proposed project is not a 50% remodel, meets all the floor area, height ratio, setback regulations, so maintains the required setbacks and everything, it would be reviewed and approved by staff. Because right now, I'm telling you, every single parcel, I mean, every single parcel in the downtown area is substandard. All the houses, all the parcels on Dominga, everything's substandard. And so, if they want to enclose a porch, they have to go through a use permit process, even if that enclosure is going to meet all the required combined setbacks, which are pretty significant since the 70s. Fairfax, Fairfax used to allow people to just maintain five feet on either side. Well, now they've got a combined of 15. So I'll give you an example. We had this woman. She has kind of a U-shaped house. She just wanted to pop out and enclose a little front porch area. It met, where she was building met all the setbacks, but she had to come to you because her parcel was substandard. And it wasn't even getting anywhere near any of the neighbors. It met all the setbacks, the height regulations. It didn't put her over the floor area ratio. It didn't put her over the lot coverage. But her parcel was created in 1920, and it was substandard in size and width.
So, are we talking here a physical improvement versus a vacant lot with a new building?
Yes. I mean, new houses require your review. They require very minimum design review. And most of our lots are already built on, so the ones that are remaining, we still have some substandard ones, but new houses are usually in the, they're usually in the hillsides because those are the hard parcels to build on, so they require HRD permits from you. So they're not going to go by...
New construction on a vacant lot would come to us. Accessory structures, how would they be dealt with under this? And let me, maybe let me just go down.
Separate, that's a separate category.
Let me go down the list. So accessory structures, increasing the footprint of the structure. In the case that you talk about where they had the, and that may be the one by Doc Egger Park, I'm not sure, where they had a porch that they wanted to enclose to make a dining room. So it wasn't really changing or expanding the footprint. So how would we, you know, would increasing the footprint of the structure have any bearing? And then the last one, where you talk about the examples that we've seen before that have come to us, windows. We've had windows be an issue for taking a unfinished area and making a storage area because there were windows. We had windows be an issue where there was that pop-out. The window seat, yeah. So, again, there's some things here that maybe are more concerning to me for a public review, but not, you know, I mean, if it's something that's happening within the footprint of a house, of a structure, then I, I guess, for me, it's not a blanket here. There would be some things I would want to see.
Well, okay, so you can set it up any way you want to set it up, but I would say that because of two really difficult projects that we have had, where I believe that most neighbors would not have had an issue with those things, with the one window and the window seat that was still 70 feet away from the other neighbor's property, I don't think we should require all these things to come before you. That's what the appeal process is for. So if a neighbor believes that a window seat is somehow really going to ruin their lives, they have a process to go forward. But I don't know that we should just require every single window seat addition that only bumps out three feet from a wall and meets all the setbacks, right? I mean, this one didn't, this one didn't meet the combined, that's why, so that, we're not suggesting that that window seat go away. The window, the window issue would have gone away because they weren't in any setbacks. He wasn't requiring any variances. He just enclosed a lower area for his storage and put a window in for light, right?
So what is the process that a neighbor would need to go through if this were an administrative permit? I mean, I think what you're getting at here really is that properties that only have the lot width problem
Or size.
Or size, you know, it's like, you know, you've heard from me all years about, why are we doing this? You know, why are we approving this little window? Why are we approving this little fence? Why, you know, et cetera. But, I mean, echoing Cindy's concern, you know, we do want to make sure that projects, not everything gets through us without some kind of review, especially the footprint, you know, of a building. But I guess the idea is if a footprint of a building is increased into the side setback, it would come here, right?
It would come.
Because then it'd be a problem other than just
It would need a variance, right.
Right. So therefore, I'm kind of in favor of this idea, as long as there is public notice, that the public has a way of, at least the method of appeal that they have, you know, paying the $400 fee and getting the 10 days from some period of notice that they get. Gee, this has been administratively approved. If you have a problem, you have an appeal right, something that goes out to them 300 feet, whatever, 500 feet, giving them a chance to have that appeal, then I'm okay with this stuff, as long as it, so I think that last paragraph that Cindy read is a little rough on the English.
Yeah.
The way it's written, with the exception of lot width. I think we kind of want to break that up into a couple of sentences. Because, I mean, if you just take it out, if you just say, all the regulations for the zoning district and property is located in, and take out the part in commas, "in to be administered, approved by staff", and what, "in what? To be administratively approved by staff?", that's the question. I mean, if I'm an English teacher, you know, that would be, that would be the problem. So you need to reword that a little bit, and then that's understandable. And then there's a public notice thing, that they have an ability to appeal, and we've got that administratively set too. Good.
And I think one of the things that I was thinking about on this one is that, what would be the things that would fall under ministerial review and what would fall under administrative review? Like, maybe that there are some that just fall out and they automatically go to building permit, whereas there might be some that require a higher level of review at staff level, and this noticing that we're talking about, where we're maybe offering people a bit of time to come in and review things before it's approved, and giving, you know, comment at the staff level, and then what goes to planning commission. So I was kind of trying to break out a little bit more on what Cindy was mentioning.
Yeah, relating to what Commissioner Swift was asking about accessory structures, and you'll see on page seven, you know, our item five, is that's where we're starting to say that sheds or accessory structures as living space, you know, those are the type of things, they're small, they're low, they're typically in backyards. This is not, again, this is something that, hey, if they meet certain standards, setbacks, FAR, height, we could say, you know, let's give that to staff.
But that's, and that's what I was asking the questions about this, because, you know, we have that as another item on this list. Here, we're talking substandard lots.
Right.
So when we talk about that, are we also including in there, you know, accessory structures and some of these other things? I want to be clear on what would fall under this versus some of these other things we're already talking about elsewhere in here.
So, yeah, so what, I was following up on Commissioner Rodriguez's comment about figuring out what could be administrative, i.e. still a discretionary application with public notice, appeal, et cetera. And then we'd simply say, here's the standards for what you can do ministerially, where it's not going to be a public notice. There isn't going to be an appeal. You know, somebody just basically has to provide enough documentation that they meet all the relevant standards. And perhaps, people could still qualify for that ministerial review, the building permit review, for a parcel that's substandard in terms of width or size, as long as they met all the other standards. And I think what you would find is that a lot of people, if they could, you know, whether it's the staff-level administrative review or a ministerial review, would design their projects to hit that, because it reduces the level of uncertainty. I mean, certainly if you qualify for a building permit, that takes out the uncertainty, but you'll see people saying, oh gee, so if I have to, if I have to meet, you know, these setback standards, but I can get this type of review, you know, or if I meet these, I'll get this type of review. And so you'll see people design their projects so it's below a certain height, below a certain size. You know, that's something else. For accessory structures, we could limit the size of the structure, so it's something relatively small. So those are the type of things where you can, as you create policies and regulations, you start to say, these are our desired outcomes. And you'll see people, you know, quite logically say, yeah, I want to get that, achieve that, or stay below that trigger for the higher level of review, so I'm going to design my project accordingly.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
My thoughts on this one is, I'm thinking maybe we can talk further about it, similar to the one we were talking about for the 50% remodel. To me, it seems like, you know, well, let's just, you know, talk about these substandard lots that aren't wide enough, and that's one category. And then on page six, we have this whole discussion about the window seat additions and the closet, and that seems like a different category, you know. So, I would like to just talk further about it, maybe be a little bit more clear on the different categories. And as to what Phil was saying about giving folks the right to an appeal after something's been administratively approved, I frankly would think, I thought we had talked, and maybe I read in here, I'm getting tired, I guess, but I thought there was some idea that even before administrative approval, a community, like a neighbor, might be able to trigger it getting out of administrative and going to the planning commission, you know. So it's not even like you have to file the appeal. You basically say, uh-uh, I got an issue, and you take it to planning because it's an issue. Whereas then the ones that would be administratively reviewed would be the ones that nobody's complaining about, you know. So that's one idea. All right, so number four. Thoughts on number four? Hey, how about the tree committee rep?
Yes, I have lots of opinions about the tree. And anything that can be done to reduce applications for the tree committee would be greatly appreciated. And we struggle with when there's been a planning application that requires tree removal. You know, with a lot, you know, they do feel like their hands are tied. But, I mean, I think it's important that there is a representative from the planning commission on the work so that they can explain the project and like what we, you know, what we discussed. And lots of times, we do, you know, there is a tree. There was one project on, what was it, Willow, where we tried to, where we tried to, you know, move the house to accommodate the tree and all that. But there are, there are many applications that come to the tree committee that really could be done over the counter. And I think we should try to encourage that where it makes sense.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that, I think that, stat here for that, in other words, having a report from an arborist who is not going to do the work, I think that's a good idea. That's sort of similar to our smog check, where you go to a gas station, it's not going to repair your car, so they, you know, et cetera. Maybe we could even also have some kind of certification process so that we can pre-approve some arborists. some arborists. That's a possibility, maybe, just suggesting. But the question came up earlier, and I'm wondering, is there a program to identify trees in danger of falling, right of ways and things? And what do we do about that?
No program, but I do intend to point out to the crew, the tree that I saw today, because, yeah, it's Sir Francis Drake, so, you know, there's a big traffic tie-up, not only in a higher likelihood that if that tree does fall, it's going to hit something. So, yeah.
But there is kind of a process, because any neighbor that sees a tree that's dangerous could call the building official, and he will take a look, and if it's really about to fall, he will direct, that a letter be sent to the person that owns the tree or is responsible for it, telling them that it's in danger of falling and they need to get a tree permit and get it out, or submit for an emergency tree permit, so.
So there is a process for an emergency tree permit, but is there, is there a process for the town to identify a tree, you know, tie a yellow ribbon around it or something and say, you know, we're going to have to have a really quick hearing on this, even though it's owned by someone, because it's going to fall on the road? Is there any process like that?
You mean for the town to call an emergency tree committee meeting?
Or notify the owner, you have a tree we've identified that's in danger of, you know, public-
Yeah, the building official would notify them and let them know that it's a danger, and then it doesn't have to go to the tree committee. If they bring in an arborist report that says, this is an imminent danger of falling, the town manager has the authority, the building, the planning director has the authority to approve immediate removal. It doesn't have to go to the tree committee.
Okay, great. Otherwise, you know, I think as long as we are pretty strict on what arborists we take the opinions of, then I think that ministerial permits for this purpose are a good idea. Better than-
Whoa, 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 I don't think we're talking about ministerial-
No, I mean administrative permits.
No, 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 I thought we were talking about having these reviewed by the planning commission, am I wrong?
We're talking about everything, but I think what Phil was talking about was which projects can just be reviewed internally. So in other words, is that if the tree's dead, does it have to go-
Okay, okay.
Exactly, that's what I mean.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
You know, this is, it's late and this is complex, so it's all good. So the, so we just have to be, you know, we just have to be careful. I mean, part of the problem we have in Fairfax is some people will just remove tree, I mean, there's civil code sections that prevent this and give people claims in court if they want, but people just remove trees because the permit process is too onerous. If we can make that happen a little easier, people might actually come to you, get some analysis before they just take out a tree, and then a neighbor has to complain, but it's too late, the tree's gone, right? And so I think this process is certainly better than the one that exists that causes people to just remove trees, even though they may be healthy, because they don't like them anymore or something.
Question, what are the current requirements for tree removal in relation to arborists? Because I looked at the tree permit, and it doesn't say an arborist is required, it says that the tree committee may request at the applicant's expense to provide an arborist report?
Well, we've asked Susan Waters, who's, she's the one that handles, that takes in the applications and kind of gets them ready for us to review, and I think she tells them that they may require an arborist report, but, and she advises them, is I think is what she's told me, when she takes in the application, but they don't necessarily have to tell them, no, you must have to have an arborist report, and that's something that we debate when we're reviewing the applications. You know, when it's an oak tree, or, you know, some other type of heritage tree, you know, we have real, you know, it's really hard for us to judge. You know, somebody says, oh, it's diseased, and it looks, you know, it looks like healthy leaves and all that, it's really hard for us to decide. And we usually do ask for an arborist report if they don't provide us with one. And then we also have the other problem, where you know it's the person who's going to cut down the tree who says that the tree, the tree needs to come down for certain reasons when it, when it looks healthy. So we sometimes ask them to say, well, we need, you know, we need a different type of report. But it's not, I don't think it is, it is required. And I think they're trying to make it somewhat easy for the homeowners, they don't want to put too many demands on them, but, you know, encourage them to provide reports where it's not cut and dry.
Okay.
I'd also like to follow up very briefly, is, I've listened to Susan, and she has a pretty subtle way to do that. She'll say, we recommend you get an arborist, and I've seen projects that got continued because they didn't have an arborist report. So, you know, you might, you know, the next meeting is, you know, three weeks from now, and if you don't get an arborist report, you know, you might be two months out before you get a decision on that tree that you think is a hazard. So she's, she's putting a pretty good sales pitch on getting an arborist report, but as pointed out, there, there are times when she doesn't.
Okay, so I think, and part of this came up with, you know, the question of applications, and does it go to the tree committee before it goes to the planning commission and the planning commission? So we have, we have that issue, and then I think some of this got maybe expanded upon by staff to try and alleviate some things going, having to go to the tree committee. So on here, you're recommending that, that staff can approve removal of a tree if it seems that it's dead with an arborist report. But there is also an item in here that suggested that the staff could review applications for trees that might be damaging a home, but that didn't state whether you'd need any kind of outside report on that. And so I guess a question there would be, you know, if somebody comes in and says, well, you know, I've got this tree next to my house, and it's, you know, it's damaging the house, either, you know, the foundation or something, would you then send a building employee out there to, I mean, how would you evaluate that?
We would send Mark out, or Ray, or the town engineer, and they would see whether they thought the tree was, if they weren't sure, they would ask for an arborist report, for an arborist to say that it's, whether or not it's damaging the, but they can usually tell. You can usually tell when a tree's damaging a foundation.
So now, if that came in, that would just go to the tree committee?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So it'd be putting more work on you all, and alleviating work from the tree committee?
The real labor saver would be, it's an interesting question. I think what we're really saying is this is something that's going to save effort on the part of applicants, even though it would also say that in many instances, we're going to ask them to get a professional.
So it may be more costly for them?
Well, I mean, there's cost and there's cost. You know, the time involved is usually a cost, so if it's adding a month or two months, or adding another review after they've gotten their planning commission approval, but they still can't get their building permit, things like that, it averages out. But this is something where I think we feel comfortable doing administrative reviews, and we can do those relatively quickly, because especially if they have an arborist report, or you go out there and the tree is clearly dead, that doesn't take a lot of time.
And then I guess my other question would be, what would be left for the tree committee to review? If these kinds of things were changed?
I would say that there, I would hazard that there are plenty of trees in Fairfax that don't necessarily have a real obvious defect, disease, death, that, or something where the planning commission's already, you know, rendered a decision on a project. I mean, I've seen like five to 10 tree removal items for the tree committee.
People take them out because they want more light to their yard, they want to be able to see another tree, you know, there's all different kinds of reasons why people want to take trees out.
Laura, from your perspective on the tree committee, what would you see, what would be done in-house?
Yeah, I would say, you know, what Ben and Linda's take on it would be accurate. I mean, lots of times, people have like, you know, it's like an ornamental tree, but it's kind of, it's kind of getting old, it's getting kind of outgrowing the space, they want to change their landscaping, but, you know, we look at it's not a native tree, you know? So, you know, we usually, you know, go ahead and approve those, but suggest, you know, they put some alternate type of landscaping. It's usually when it's like some kind of heritage or native, native tree is really like when we'd have to have like some kind of more discussion about, about if they wanted to remove it. And if it looks like it's a healthy tree that they want to remove, and we had one on Cascade where, you know, the homeowner kept on arguing, oh, it's interfering with the power lines and all that, and I mean, it looked like, you know, it was a big, it was a big, looked like it was a healthy valley oak. So we did ask them to, you know, come back with an arborist report. Ultimately, we did, you know, we did approve it, but it took them, you know, it took like two to three months because, for them to get the information in, you know? And some of the stuff looks like it's, you know, it might be on the way to dying, it's not dead yet, you know? There's some kind of nuanced things. But, yeah, there's, I mean, it does take a lot of time and effort, and I think that's really, that's usually why people say they can't, you know, volunteer in order to do, and so if we could, you know, make it easier for the people who are, you know, volunteering and taking time out, other things, it would, you know, it would, it would, it would help the applicants, or it'd help the volunteers be able to do our job better.
I would certainly recommend, because there's other aspects of that tree ordinance, such as where it lists plants, it specifies that, I think it's good to have as a starting point, the town arborist review the ordinance in its entirety-
Yeah.
-as it is now, and, and he can provide his thoughts and recommendations on any changes he thinks are reasonable.
As a follow-up to that comment, I've already alerted Mr. Moore, it's the town arborist, that we likely will bring him before the planning commission, because again, in the process of reviewing applications, you're often making a decision about trees. Whether or not the ultimate decision is supposedly before the tree committee, by making a decision on a project, you in effect have made that decision about the tree. So I think some training for the planning commission, just understanding that, and maybe we could put that in the context also of modifications to the tree ordinance to possibly streamline it, be more effective.
Through the chair? I beat you to it this time. I agree that staff should be able to review tree removal permits that are submitted with an ISA, an arborist report that does not provide the cutting services as well. And for tree removal requests, whereas you indicated it's damaged or damaging a residence, I believe that's very clear, can be a very clear situation. I was on the planning commission many years back when we would review tree removal with the applications for development. Predominantly, it was new development or major development, so I actually don't see that as a problem, and it could solve a lot of time for the tree committee and all that back and forth that happens about us approving a project, and then after the fact, it goes to the tree committee to have them approve something that basically their hands are somewhat tied. So I agree with, I agree with your recommended changes.
And initially, I had a lot of concerns about this one, just because, you know, I was hoping that if the tree committee needed to weigh in on, you know, tree removals, that that could come, we could switch it around, and maybe it'd come before we weigh in. But Laura has effectively made me feel guilty, and I'm going to go along with, with the recommendation. Okay, so number five, we've touched about on this a little bit, but let's, maybe briefly, anybody want to weigh in on the ministerial permits?
Well, I'm ready. Okay, so most, I, I agree with most of these, but as far as like the use permit for accessory for living space, I kind of hesitate against that, because I think it could cause problems, impacts with adjacent property owners. And plumbing, I think there should be no plumbing. If it's, if it just, if it's supposed to be used for, you know, shed, you know, art studio and all that, because I think once you put plumbing in, it can get, it can expand to, you know, full bathroom, kitchen, that kind of thing. So I think that that is something that should go to the planning commission if there's, for that, for accessory structures that are living space. But otherwise, fence, the fences, encroachment permits, monument signs, you know, routine things that staff feels are, meet the, meet the code requirements.
I'm sorry, would you clarify, did you just say that you would, you would not want staff to approve any living spaces that include offices, studios, meditation rooms?
Correct.
You would not, okay, thank you.
I'm in agreement. The use permits for accessory structures as living space, really not that sure. We've had a few of those be some issues, but I, certainly if there's going to be any plumbing, we do, we do want to see that one. You know, and another, another parameter is if an accessory structure is going to be an ADU, we need to make sure that it's, you know, sort of finished enough or complete enough, because typically, you know, these kinds of structures aren't good for living space.
Yeah, the challenge is, is if somebody flies under the ADU flag, we're going to be processing a building permit. That's the irony, is that they can build a 1,200 square foot ADU if they have sufficient lot area, and the first thing anybody outside the building department would know, I mean, we check it, but, would be when the construction starts. So, you know, it's been a big sea change in terms of looking at accessory structures.
But clarifying, the size of that unit cannot be greater than 50% of the existing building area, up to 1,200 square feet. So if your existing house was 1,000 square feet, the maximum would be 500.
Correct.
Okay, fence height variance, I don't have a problem with that. Encroachment permits into the public right-of-way, I would like those to come before the-
Okay, I can, I can understand why you guys would be concerned about that, but could you give up access stairways? I mean, so we have people that have access stairways that do not meet building code requirements for rise and run. They're rotting. They want to move them slightly to comply with the rise and run requirements of the building code, and they have to go through this big, long, public hearing process just to replace their front access stairs.
Then what we need to do is get specific as to the types of encroachment permits that could go to staff only versus coming to us, because I think when we talk about encroachment permits in general into the public right-of-way, and even though when you get an encroachment permit, it's understood that it could be taken back-
Mm-hmm.
...and that that area would have to revert back-
area would have to revert back to what it is, the reality is that that is difficult to do. So, I think public right-of-ways are important for a variety of reasons, including safety. So, I would rather have those come to the planning commission unless you can identify, if we can get into specific examples of ones that would, would not.
So, I don't really have a pony, a dog in this fight. We are trying to get staff time freed up so that we have time to work on some of the bigger issues. The one reason that it's good that encroachment permits go to the planning commission is a lot of times they're taking away street parking, even with relocating their stairs. And so, you know, whatever you decide, it's fine with me.
Monument signs, entryway arbors connecting to front fences, open shade borders, were we, you in, looking only at residential areas, or were you talking, were you considering the downtown business areas as well with that? Because when we talk about monument signs, the only one that I think came before us was, if I understand, a monument sign, was the one for 31 Bellinas that we had a sign permit requirement for. That one, that was the six or eight foot, if that's what sign that they got a permit for that hasn't been put in yet.
That's the only one that's come recently, but there's a, there's going to be a monument sign at the new barbecue place where Chevron used to be, that was, that what came before the planning commission, and there are monument signs. The Good Earth has one. The Good Earth has one on the corner that went before the planning commission.
I mean, and I guess in my mind, I make a distinction between the downtown business, the town center and the businesses versus residents and that. And I think when we look at things like signage and monument signs in the business area, I think those I would like to see. So, I make a distinction between if somebody's putting, like an arborer at their entrance way with their fence at their home, that's not a concern for me, but something in the business downtown public area to me kind of rises to a different level. And then on the accessory structures as living spaces, I guess I was trying to get from you what you considered a living space was versus a tool shed versus...
Living space typically has sheet rock and extensive electrical, you know, for light switches and overhead lights.
Because you could almost do that in a garage, or, you know, I mean, that kind of a, you could even do that, well, I guess I'll make this easy and say, I think accessory structures, I agree, should come before us.
Yeah, and that's fine. The only reason we included that one is it just seems, I cannot tell you the last time the planning commission denied someone's request to build an accessory structure or convert an accessory structure to living space.
Yeah, and I don't think the issue, yeah, and I understand it, but I don't think the issue is, is whether we approved or deny them. I think the issue is bringing them forward in a public commission meeting.
Okay, anybody else on that one?
I guess I'll, I'll speak to this one. I'm in support of staff processing things ministerially, if we can just clarify circumstances under which there are some that go in that direction. And I thought I was left with more questions than not, so I'm going to generally stick to what I have been saying, and that is that I support the concept of reducing things coming to the planning commission with clarity. And I do think that there are differences both in land use type as well as location, valley floor versus hillside, but there was just a lot more detail that I would need, and I'm still in support of hearing what that detail would be from staff.
Yeah, so I guess this one, I think I'd put back in the carrier, let's keep talking about it. And the last one, because we're skipping six and seven, we're going to go to eight.
I'm sorry, were we finished with the staff ministerial items?
Yeah, unless you wanted to say something.
I just, thank you, I just did have something to say. I'm really happy about the approval of the fence variances and the flexibility there, because that's a constant problem, as, as you noted, that the land slopes so much in every direction that it's impossible to figure out where to measure the six feet, let alone get six feet that's above your navel in some places in my yard. So, I'm very happy to see this. The encroachment permits, I think, are also fine. Monument signs, I don't have a problem with arbors on the fences. The monument signs, I guess it all depends on the monument sign. We had one that we had approved for the station. I don't know if it's going in, it's probably going in at a later date, but there, there can be issues about blocking view, drive views with monument signs. I suppose you guys could look at that, I don't know. Unless they submit some detailed plans, it could be easy to miss if you're just looking at the design and size of a, of a sign without looking at the, the street, the street drive aisle there. In terms of accessory structures, yeah, I think tool sheds, garages, cabanas could be approved by staff, and living spaces coming back to the planning commission. So, I agree with commissioners on that.
Okay, last one is the...
So, is that one then just going to come back to us?
Yeah, I mean, my two cents was we need to keep talking about that one. Okay, so for discretionary permit expiration periods, we talked about this one, Phil, briefly, you know, if you got your project approved, but you haven't done anything about it, how are you feeling about this one?
Okay, I, this has, there's some issues that are, because, you know, we don't allow, for example, we don't allow excavation between, was it April and October, right? So, that has to be taken into, I mean, I know excavation permits is one of the categories of permits here. We have to take that into consideration, so that, you know, your time, it may have, so a project may have to be allowed for more than a year, like a year and a half, because they got approved in March and they couldn't excavate, so, you know what I mean? So, I think there needs to be a little bit of, but it is discretionary, so there's kind of a built-in idea there. I just want to see if we can get some, some parameters in here.
If we match the language that we have in our other sections where the permits actually do expire, they expire in a year unless the applicant requests an extension prior to the expiration, and then if the project has not changed, like they don't try to move walls or change, then the, the planning director can grant them a one-year extension. So, I mean, you could, you could match the other sections of the code.
I think that would be a great idea to do that. The other problem I have is that we should be, we really need this in place for visible kind of commercial projects. I'm thinking of the coffee thing, you know, and I'm thinking of the, the barbecue place, and they're really taking their time with these things. I don't know what we can do, though. I mean, can we have a bonding process? Can we have something so that we know they're going to finish the project? And so, and there's issues like that, and these, these things really should be heavily in this category. Visible, especially, I think they're going to be commercial projects that are destroying our downtown area.
We can provide incentives for completion. So, you go over the time period and you get fined, things like that. So, and other jurisdictions do do that, because, yeah, these highly visible projects that, for some reason, I guess it's just something you're seeing all the time, and you're going, why the heck, and I'm going to give you an update on certain projects, so.
Okay, so I agree we should have expiration dates. I would look at the particular permit and kind of fit the, just be mindful of the timeframe, because, for example, in the sign ordinance, we do have an expiration date of six months. I think it says, "All approvals granted by the planning commission shall expire within six months unless acted upon by the issuance of a building permit or the erection of the approved sign." So, that kind of goes back to that 31 Bellinas with the monument sign issue. But a question that I had too, in that said, you know, for the sign ordinance, it says, expires in six months unless acted upon by the issuance of a building permit. Well, in that case, they would have already had a building permit, and I'm just asking, so the sign itself would have required a building permit?
Yes, yeah, it wasn't included in their drawings that went to you for design review, so they would have, they would need a building permit.
For the, to put the sign up, okay. So, I would just look at things like the sign, or make sure that the expiration kind of fits, kind of the type of, of permit, as Phil said. And I guess the other issue is, you know, building permits that kind of go on, but, so I'm in agreement with this.
Anybody else have any thoughts they want to share on this item?
The only addition that I was going to recommend is that, yes, they obtained a building permit, but there'd be substantial ongoing construction.
Okay, well, I think we're, we're done with this item. Let's go to minutes, is that last?
So, minutes, the only thing that I saw on the minutes was under public comments on non-agenda items. It says Ms. Robert, and it should be Roberta, and she was here tonight as well. And I think that was the only correction I had.
Anybody else with any comments on the minutes?
Through the chair, I did have one correction on page two. Commissioner Fragoso's comments, one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet from the bottom, I referred to the transportation category and stated I was not sure there was anything that could be done to improve traffic flow on Sir Francis Drake. I said, I think what I said was that there was nothing the planning commission could do to improve traffic flow, but that we should consider checking the, the lights, the, the stoplights on Sir Francis Drake, the timing of those lights, which was also noted, noted in another commissioner's comment, but that was all.
Okay, anybody else with any comments on the minutes? And do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I still move.
And anybody to second?
All second.
Thank you. Motion Fragoso, second Caroline, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great. So, I think...
Commissioner, comments and requests?
Oh, okay.
I have, I have just a, thank you. I was at a board of supervisors' meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the board has adopted a new green building code, something we've been talking about for a long time, and it provides us with a good opportunity, I think, to piggyback on that building code of theirs that I found very, very interesting. One really significant change that I see and, and was very happy to find there is a requirement for EV charging stations for not only new developments, commercial or residential, but also private multifamily and single-family residential requiring an EV charging station, multifamily and commercial requiring 10% EV charging stations and 10% of their parking spaces EV charger-ready. And I would really like to see, Ben, I'll send you a copy of that, and I would really like to have us review that at some point, and perhaps even adopt it ourselves.
Anybody else with any comment?
We talked about the dark skies, so you think that's going to be potentially an April briefing, right?
Told by the person giving the presentation.
They are definite on April 19th, yes.
With the upcoming Planning Commissioners Academy, do you know of any other Marin planning commission that is sending anybody by any chance? I was just curious as to whether there would be any other local attendees.
I don't know, but I can check.
Okay. And then my last comment, the cannabis workshop in December? Or, I think I had asked if we could have those slides posted to the town's website?
Right, yes, the PowerPoint presentations.
Yeah, because I thought those were pretty informative for folks. I didn't find them on the website.
We looked, we looked into that, and I think, I'll, I'll check with Michelle where we left the, the posting of that, and if we can do it, we'll do it.
I sort of have kind of a thing with, you know, when we have meetings and, and presenters provide presentations in PowerPoint, I think it's always good to be able to attach those to, you know, the, the rest of what is captured in a, in a meeting, just because it helps. It's not as good to look at just the video from a meeting.
Although the video does show the, the PowerPoints as well, but yeah.
Linda, I have a quick question for you. I just was looking at these resos that you gave me. There's a couple in the back from way, way back that Phil signed, and indicating there was a 2012 meeting. Was I on the commission in 2012? Do you remember when I was appointed? It feels like 10 years, but can it really be nearly 10 years?
2012, six years.
No, it couldn't have been.
Can it? It said I was absent at this meeting, maybe, maybe I came in, maybe I came in somewhere in between, anyway.
You want me to check?
I'm going to ask you to resolve that with Linda after the meeting. In the meantime, we have one more item on our agenda, which is the appointment of a representative from the planning commission to the tree committee.
Can I make a suggestion, since everyone says we've got, you know, full, full, a full life? I don't know, is it possible we could reduce the term? I mean, I've been doing it for three... I mean, I've been doing it for three years, and I now are having to work weekends because I am so booked at work and I've got shortage of staff and all that. So I really, I really can't do it anymore, but I understand the burden it is on other people, too. So why can't, I know at one point we even talked about, can we like rotate? And Linda, you said that was going to be too cumbersome or anything, but maybe if it's just like a six-month term or a shorter term, it would be easier. It would be easier for people to be able to do it.
An update, I believe there is some movement to allow the town council to appoint an at-large member if there's nobody on the planning commission who's able to serve. So there, you know.
Great, let's go for that.
And also, if we are able to change the tree ordinance to allow the planning commission to approve some of the items that the tree committee would have questions about, then maybe we wouldn't need a representative from the planning commission.
So I take it nobody here tonight is jumping to get onto the tree committee?
I think the problem for me was that the code 8.36 was broke, the link was broke. So I couldn't even read what they were doing. And then the, their commission website didn't really describe like the frequency they met or the time of days. I was like, I didn't even really understand what people could get into, so.
I can get that information, too.
It's the fourth Monday of the month on, at 7 o'clock here in this building.
Do they usually last?
20 to 30 minutes. But you are, but you, but there are site visits and, but...
Right.
But they do post a, the staff report, and it's given a week in advance. So you do have one, like, actually, you've got a week, you get it on Friday, so you've got about 10, nine days to review the items.
Usually average like six trees or?
Yeah, I'd say that, but that could be, potentially be reduced if...
Could I interject really quickly with the planning director's report? I promise it'll be done in 60 seconds. You've covered most of it, so I'll just let you know that I am going to put a link to the League of California Cities 2018 Housing Regulation Guide. So it gives you some insight into what the state's doing. And we are also in the process of completing our annual housing element report, and I will report out to the commission when we get that done. We'll put that on the agenda. We also have a new resolution numbering format to avoid repeats of confusion over the difference between an application number and a reso number. So we're using a five-digit number with the year first, minor stuff. Java, it's now in the hands of the attorneys. Staff has made repeated valiant efforts to clarify the bathroom easement with Good Earth. And it's one of those things where you kind of get a sense that they aren't really anxious to do it because at some point, you know, it's like, come on, change this language, do this, done. So now it's in the attorney's hands. They are going to be applying to open soon, and we would like to not be in their way, but this is uniform, or California building code requirement. And, you know, if you're selling a diuretic, you should have a bathroom, especially if it's not just drive-up.
I hate to say, I told you so, I was the only one who brought that up and voted against that.
Yeah, we're experienced.
To put in a bathroom.
Yeah. And then as we go into our formula business... Formula Business Code Reference also talks about historic guidelines. So it's one of those things where the historic thing seems to touch on a lot of things that the town would like to keep control over. So that's it, thank you.
You know, you brought up an interesting problem. The formula business ordinance needs to be a little bit revised, I think, because maybe the town council needs to, I could use some clarification as to whether their concern, whether the concern of the ordinance, let's say, is to prevent large corporations from establishing businesses here. Or we have a recent example that we approved Bliss, and there are other Blisses. So that may not be a problem because the Blisses aren't owned by, you know, some central company, they're owned by private people, but there is a formula to it. If you look at the one on Melrose in LA, it's very, very similar to the one in downtown Fairfax. So what's the concern? That's the issue, that's the question for the, for you guys in the town council. Are we concerned that it's a corporation? Or are we concerned that it looks like another one? And so that's kind of my issue that I wanted to raise, thank you.
All right, so, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I was going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody.